Mr. Bryant?
Here.
Mr. Faulkner?
Here.
Mr. Atwood?
Present.
Ms. Ballard?
Here.
Mrs. Orza?
Here. I would like to wish this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Maya? Alright, well, thank you for having me tonight. The purpose of tonight's visit with you all is just to kind of give you an update on what's going on at Norwood High School. That maybe you might know some of this, maybe you might not, so I'll try to fill in gaps and certainly give you your questions. You can talk now, or you can talk to me personally some other time. The first one is graduation, which is always the best day of the school year, May 14th, 2019. A little earlier, we are at the mercy of the Centos Center a little bit when we can get in there. It will be at 7:30 with our students practicing at noon that day. And it's kind of been a tradition for a long time. Our kids can walk, and they do do that, so we will take care of that on that day. And we'll be expecting a great speech from the former president, whoever that might be at that time.
And you'll have an interpreter.
And we'll have an interpreter ready to go. Like last year, all students will wear red gowns, and as of today, there were 133 possible graduates on our books. The bad news is there are 32 who still need to pass some part of the end-of-course exam. And as you know, students cannot graduate from high school unless they earn the 18 points, regardless of what they do at Norwood High School. If they're a 4.0 student and they still don't get those points, they still cannot graduate. So we're working with all of those students currently. They're all in a special advisory, getting extra help. They will have the opportunity to take this end-of-course exam in December. If they pass what they need to pass, they're finished and just finish their coursework. If they do not pass, they have one more opportunity in the spring, but they will not be able to walk in graduation, even if they pass in the spring. The scores come back after our graduation date, and that was the same as last year as well. So we are hoping to get all those students to a place where they can walk. As a matter of fact, Graduate Services was at school today, and the students are going to start ordering their caps and gowns. Last week, we had a parent principal coffee. It was an idea that we had as we started looking at some things we can do better. We realized that we need to connect with our parents a little better, so we invited some parents. The turnout was very low, however, the information that those parents provided was absolutely awesome. And it was really eye-opening for us to hear from them and hear a different perspective than our own. And they probably spent about an hour with us, basically just talking. There was really no agenda, other than we asked them to do a survey, and then we opened the floor for them to speak to us. And it was three great parents who had lots of questions and lots of things to say. So we will ask, we're going to set up our computers on conference night, which is October 25th, and try to have more parents take our survey. We'll have them set up in the lobby. It's a 10-question survey, takes about five or six minutes, and we hope to get some more information from our parents based off that survey. And then we hope to have two more coffees before the end of the school year, probably once in January and once towards the end, where we will invite different parents to come meet with us and talk about the school and pass on the good news that we're doing as well. Conferences will be October 25th, as we did last conference session. It's a walk-in or appointments, whichever works out. We found that at our last conferences, we had no difference in people whether we sent a card home or whether they walked in. We are also going to have the orchestra, quartet playing. We are going to have some goodies for, some Halloween goodies for our parents and kids that come in. We've asked the teachers to do some things outside their room with student work. So again, we are always trying to entice people to come and meet with their teachers, and we will continue to do that. We also have an after-prom committee, which started at the end of last year with some parents who were interested in having a safe place for our kids to go after prom. We've raised some money over the summer, not a lot, but it'll get going, and we're going to meet again on October 23rd. All parents are welcome to be a part of that group. And we used to do after-prom years ago, and then our coordinator stopped doing it, and we stopped doing it for a couple of years. And so we had some parents stuff up and said, "Let's try to do this again." So we will be meeting, and basically, it's a group that's trying to raise money to do stuff for after-prom. At the high school, we are also doing weekly grade checks for our student athletes, and that will continue into the fall season. We call them paint sheets every Wednesday. Anyone who plays athletics stops by, picks up a sheet. They take it to their teachers throughout the day, and they turn it in to us at the end of the day, and we have a spreadsheet that the coaches can look at, and we let them know which students are eligible to participate and which students are not. Our current policy says that if you have two or more F's, you cannot play. You can practice, but you can't play in a game. So we look at those, we mark those kids who can't play, and I will tell you, it hasn't been a whole lot. But the students also have the opportunity to get that grade up before the next game. So if they turn it in on Wednesday and their grades are bad, by Friday they improve them, we switch them to eligible, and off they go. This is a great way for lots of eyes to be on students' grades. It's the administration, it's the teachers, it's the kids, it's the coaches, and the parents as well. So we've really enjoyed it. We took it out of the coaches' hands last year. We decided that we would do it, and usually I can tell if someone hands it to me and it's not good, they do one of these, and you know, sometimes it's a little embarrassing for them to have to give a grade card to one of us when it's not great. And we look at it right on the spot, "What do you have?" But it's been very positive, and our kids are used to it. They don't, they just do it. You know, you train them, and they just, they just do it. If they're absent, they can do it the next day. And again, our goal is to, one, make sure that everybody passes their classes, and two, remains eligible for the current season and the next season. We have six new teachers this year, one new assistant principal and one new athletic director, and I can say that we are off to a great start. Sometimes when you lose teachers, you really feel it. I can honestly say that our teachers have hit the ground running. So has our new assistant principal, and so has our new AD. So Wyatt's sitting here, he's doing a great job, and very appreciative of his work. Questions, comments?
So I have a question, and this is related to student-athlete GPAs. So I commend the effort to have more eyes on the student-athletes' grade point average and what classes are passing. However, I think it would be interesting if there's any way we could collect, say, historical GPA data and see if this pink slip or pink sheet system is really helping our overall student-athlete GPA.
I don't have any hard data on that. I do know from last year, we started doing it during basketball season, and at the end of basketball season, there were only two kids not eligible to move on. Now, more data points I don't have, but we can certainly work on that. We've had a history of getting to the end of a sport. I remember in football, a couple of years ago, we made the playoffs, and we had four kids who couldn't play because they weren't eligible, and we were not doing pink sheets at that time.
Yeah.
But I'll keep some data on, at the end of the semester, how many are eligible, how many are not, out of how many, and share that with you.
Okay.
And we can do that at the end of every season, really. Different kids, possibly, but it would still be telling whether our numbers are lower for kids who are not eligible.
And I was wondering, what is the date for prom this year?
Oh, gosh.
First Friday in May?
I think it's the first Friday in May.
Okay.
I will look when I get back, and I'll email that to you.
Because I do, I work a lot of after-prom events through the company.
May 3.
So if I can maybe snaggle a donation, I'll work on that.
Okay, great.
I can't promise it, because that's also our busiest season, and every piece of equipment we have is out. So if it's something that I might be able to get my company to do a donation towards the after-prom, I'll try to do that. I just have to have dates, so.
May 3.
Okay.
Thank you.
Keep me posted.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heinz.
Next, we have Mr. Heinz, our athletic director, and of course, he's here tonight to share with you some really good news from the athletic department.
Yeah, for everyone that I haven't met, thank you for having me here. Just to start with being new this year, starting in July, I set down a few goals that I wanted to achieve, and I feel like we have done that and more. Kind of a lot of it was the student-athletes' recognition that we give our kids, just to make sure that everyone's aware of what's going on. We have sport events at school, that sort of thing. Also to improve the communications, which I believe that we have done with social media and the website, and just have first-class events and facilities. And I feel like through all the sport events that we've had, they just kept getting better and better, and I feel that our facilities will begin to come up to par with that as well, with a few things that we're doing. So, starting out the year, we had four new varsity head coaches, women's soccer cheer, men's basketball and cross-country, and also a new FI trainer who is amazing. She is from Tri-Health. And then some of the things that we did to improve the communications and the recognition of the students and to pass more information along was to start the athletics website. So norwoodindians.org, have a lot of information on there about the coach's contact information, eligibility, that's where you put athletes of the week, I'm trying to think of everything we put on there, Norwood Indians Weekly, which is also sent out every Friday. So directions for schools and ways to contact me or the athletic department as well. And there's a lot more to it. Each team has their own site that they can control as well, so that they can pass more information as well. Obviously, larger social media presence, Facebook and Twitter and Instagram on that every single day, just putting out what sports are going on that day, any new events like playoffs that we're in, men's basket, or, I'm sorry, men's soccer, playing at Taylor on Monday, all of that information, and then obviously, athletes of the week and anything great that our student-athletes are doing. You've probably already seen it, the Norwood Indians Weekly and the email that I send out every Friday. Hopefully that you guys enjoy that. It's a great way so that everyone gets to know what's going on, maybe something from the smaller sports that not everyone would see, so I think that's great. We started Skyline Cheerleading Norwood Athletes of the Week, which is great. They get a bag from Skyline and a free, free, free Coney, I think. Not for me, I'm not from Cincinnati, so. But, and then Jimmy Johns actually approached me probably a month ago, and they wanted to do a Player of the Game. So what we're doing now is for all varsity home games, we're picking a player of the game, and they get a free sandwich from them, so. And then a few things that we've done at the beginning of this year, obviously, we did the Buffalo Wings and Rings kickoff night, which was awesome, that raised over $1,000 for us. It was us and Madeira that were there, both of our football teams, cheerleaders, bands, and had some interviews, had a weekend contest, so, and all those, all those videos are online too for you to see, so that was pretty fun to do. And then a few great things that our student-athletes are doing, Maddie Baker, she's a junior on the cross-country team, and John Cole is also a junior on the golf team. They were nominated and invited to the OHSAA Leadership Summit that we went to last Tuesday. It was something, it was an all-day event. We left at 5:45 in the morning. We got there, they served us pizza, had a bunch of speakers, talked about leadership and just taking charge of the team and asking a bunch of questions, just finding ways to get those kids more involved, so I think that was great. We have Cincinnati Inquirer Athlete of the Week nominations. Maddie Baker's on it this week for a second time. I also sent out an email about that. Brandon Rains was earlier this year after his hole-in-one on the golf course, and then Markell Hurd is also this week from his football game on Friday, so. And then a few things that we're doing to improve the facilities. We actually, and I don't know how many people that have told about this, but we're actually getting a bunch of TVs to act as, well, they're going to go on the top of the concession at the football stadium as well as at the high school. And what we're going to do is we're going to have ads on them that we can sell, have the prices for food, and then anything else that we want to put on there, like for football, we do live coverage that we can do through there. So I think that'll be really cool to spruce everything up, so. We are very close to having a new softball scoreboard. I know that everyone's seen the one that's on the side of the building, but we are working on a standalone one. I'm working with a donor right now, and we almost have everything set, so the only thing we would have to pay for is the install, which I think would be great for them. We also got the senior banners that we give to, or that have been done for the seniors. We also got those donated by Wallace Dentistry, so that'll be free for all the seniors. That's not something that we have done before, which will be great for them. We started a Title IX Committee, and our first meeting is November 13th, and it's just for us to look at what we're doing, if we can do anything better from that standpoint. So there'll be more to come of that. We have members from the community and varsity head coaches as well on that committee. A new thing, the cheerleaders have been invited to perform on Warmer 98, the morning show, next Friday, the 19th. Just got that all finalized, so I'm going to be sending out a bunch of info on that. So they'll be on from, I think they said, 7:30 to 8 o'clock. So the cheerleaders will go there that Friday morning, and they will do a cheer, they will do the Norwood Fight Song cheer, and then each girl will get to say their name and say hi, hi to someone over the radio, which will be really cool for them, so. And then a few other things, we are hosting the middle school boys' soccer tournament, which I guess we've never done before and never have been a part of, so we're hosting that, starting the October 13th, that Monday, and with championship games that Saturday afterwards on the 20th. And then we're also hosting two Division III sectional semifinal soccer games on the 22nd and 23rd, which will be great to have. They won't be our teams because it has to be a neutral site, but I think it'll be great to have other schools here to experience what we have to offer. And then possibly hosting two football games in early November, which would be a, probably a district final or district semifinal game, so they'll be pretty large games if we do get those. And then besides that, I know some people have had some questions about the eligibility policy, about there being a 2.0 minimum, which is not something that the OHSAA has, that's not a minimum that they have, they actually don't have one. I know that Norwood has, has a 2.0, and I know that I've gotten some questions about how that came about, so if you guys have any questions about that, I know. I have not been at a school where we have had that standard. I don't, I don't think it's a bad thing at all. I think it's great to have high standards, so. And I have not looked at how many kids would, how many more kids would play versus not play with it, so we could do a little bit more investigating on that as well, but just wanted to mention that because I have had some questions, so. That's all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Heinz? I would like to add that if you're not a Twitter follower or someone who tweets, you can follow my tweets, and oftentimes I will retweet what Mr. Heinz has sent out, and so you can follow that by just going to our website and going to the superintendent's message, and I have a live feed there that you can see all of the things I've tweeted as well as he has tweeted, so. It's a great opportunity for those people who are not interested in becoming a tweeter.
So I have a question.
Yes.
You had mentioned that we could potentially be hosting some football playoff teams as a neutral site?
Yes.
I always thought that the way our stadium was configured, it wasn't possible because we didn't have stands on the sides.
Yeah, I heard that too, and I asked them, and they said, "No, that's, that's absolutely fine."
That is fantastic.
If, if, so basically, it is up to whatever school's win that Friday before. They base the neutral site on a place that is equidistant from each school, so if for some reason it doesn't line up for us, then we might not get a game. But if it does, where, if it's, there's two schools that are 15 miles apart from each other, or I guess from us, then that's more than likely where they will play. So I know a lot of other schools do it. I know Marymont, Hezzler's Upfor, it's Madeira, Kings, Loughlin, they all do it as well, so. It all depends on how it shakes out that Friday before.
And what do we supply as a district to host a neutral site?
We can run concessions, and all the money's for us. The only thing that they need is basically the game day operation, so press box, people to take the tickets, which we get a cut of every ticket that's sold, and then obviously, like the Chan Gang site manager, and that's about it. And we also get, so we get a guaranteed cut of money from the OHSAA, and then we get, if a certain amount of, if a certain amount of people are there, then we get a cut of all of the tickets that are sold as well.
Gotcha. But I know, and just, you know, thinking back to how we put together a game day, so are, would we supply the announcer, or would we supply?
Yeah, we would just music. So it would basically be a home game for us, just between?
Between two other teams.
Yeah. So everything that I send out that everyone gets, it'll all be the same thing, I'll just have to include the ADs from either side, and?
And then the funds that we collect from potentially hosting a site that goes straight into the athletic fund?
I don't think so.
Yeah? That's fantastic.
In Alex's defense, he's working hard to fundraise because I think it was about $40,000 that we, you know, the general fund had to cover for over expenditures, or perhaps lack of fundraising in our historic, history with regard to the athletic department. So Alex's, Mr. Heinz is working really hard to, you know, get out of that hole as well as to make some money.
And also, I forgot to mention, right now, we are at about $20,000 in sponsorships and donations as of today, so.
Interesting. I know a lot of people have talked about your tweets and your information, instead of giving more information, you know, to them, right?
Yeah.
That was the first thing they noticed right off of that.
It's great for athletes.
We appreciate his work and his effort.
I do have a question for you.
Yes.
Going back to the eligibility, I know that we have a 2.0 requirement. Do you know how many, or kind of maybe a rough estimate, how many of our athletes are kind of struggling with that 2.0, and how many are really exceeding that expectation and?
I would say, without having the data, the data in front of me, we only had two athletes that were right on the edge of, I think they had like 1.9, so then they go into a probation every period for a quarter, so they can have below a 2.0 for a quarter, but they need to go to home or camp every day. We only had two out of every one that is playing now.
That's right.
That had to do that, and everyone else was above that, but that also goes back to, I don't know how many kids just didn't come out for the team because they knew about that 2.0 and they knew they didn't have it. I don't, I don't know that information, so.
I think at the real heart of it, it's the weekly challenge of making sure that you don't have failing grades. And I think if we don't monitor that, we do find we have children at the end of the quarter who are not qualified to play sports for the season moving forward, and I think that's not healthy for them, and I think as adults, we should be helping them along. And so I think, and you know, it's been our past practice that that was really the obligation of the coach, to check those pink cards. And I think the biggest thing we've learned is that really that wasn't happening. So last year, Mr. Winter Robb and his administrative team took it upon themselves to do that work. You know, with some of our coaches, they're not in our school district teaching during the day, so when they come, that's a bit of a, they're there just to coach, and that doesn't necessarily involve academics. While I'm sure they care and support greatly, you know, the academic challenge, they, they're really there just to coach. And so I think that's where we've made the shift, is that Mr. Heinz is willing to check those, particularly at our middle school level, for students, you know, grade seven and eight, especially since coaches are often not on campus. And actually, you have done that in your former positions, and it's a process that he's worked out that he can do pretty quickly. And not all of our coaches have access to some of the sensitive data systems that hold some of those grade point information. So I appreciate, appreciate his effort on that. I think at the end of the day, we all want graduates, we want students that have a healthy balance of fun and athletics, if that is the route that they choose, and we want to see them be academically challenged, but, you know, perform well academically, so. Can I just ask, in that vein, are there other activities that require eligibility?
They're not.
Like class officers or?
They're not.
Play product, anything like that? Nothing?
And the big one that comes up usually is band and silhouettes, but they're graded classes, they get a, they get a grade on their report card for those classes. And really, theater kind of does. We have a drama class that is taken, usually they shift right into the play as well, but those are the only ones.
It just seems that it's working well, it would be nice to kind of tap into that front of there.
What I'm wondering, is there a program that we can maybe start for catching those athletes that may, like you said, be kind of aware of their grade point average and kind of reach out and say, "Hey, guys, if you're interested in trying out for spring sports and you're worried about your grades, we're going to have some study sessions and, you know, maybe have some of your athletes that are doing better in their classes to come in and mentor. Like, we're going to have a football team, you know, session, if you're interested in joining for basketball, come and meet with some of our players, and we'll try to help you, get you on track," so that way they can play, and they might feel like, okay, if I can get my grades up. With other sports kids, they might feel a little bit more welcomed. I don't know if we can build a kind of a net to help gather those students, so we're not losing them just because they're afraid to come forward.
I'm going to take along with that net, when the sixth graders go to the seventh grade early in the spring, and we start talking about that transition to seventh grade, we're talking about how important grades are, and the athletic department representative generally speaks in that length about those expectations. But it's not just expectations, I mean, there, there is a lot of support and scaffolding, if you will, to help them along if they are struggling.
I have one final question, and this is related to final forms. So is final forms a system that we pay for?
Yes.
Is it terribly expensive?
Trying to think what it is now. I think it's like 900 a year.
Okay.
Around that.
All right. So do you feel that participating in this subscription service is benefiting us?
I do, and going from a school before I was at Kings, who didn't have final forms, to final forms at Kings, it simplified the athletic department's job, and that's the first thing was just the paperwork, because of all the, all the emergency medical things that need to be filled out, everything that needs to be signed off on by the student and the parent, all of that stuff. And it's easier for us to check where, if someone hasn't signed off on a certain form, it don't show up on our screen as red, and then we can alert those parents easier as well through an email or an easy phone call.
Okay. I'll probably have a conversation with you offline. Sounds good.
I'm wondering if you might be able to get your Xavier interns with the weekly report to add photos to that? Because I see the names a lot, but I never know which students those are, so if I'm at an event, I would love to know which students to go up and say, "Hey, I read about you in our weekly report. I'm, you know, really proud of what you achieved," but I have no clue who a lot of these students are.
Right.
But I think, especially if they don't want to necessarily put it on print, but have
it on the website or have some highlight photos circulating would be really cool.
Yeah.
I will say I've received nothing but compliments about our athletic department this year. A lot of compliments that I've received have come by the way of how we handle our press logs at the moment, so a lot of people have come up to me and said some really good things.
Good.
Good, yeah, that's nice to hear. Well, next on our list is the construction update, and John Peter is here with us tonight. There are a couple of things that we wanted to just inform you of, and the ground floor of the west wing has been released to us, with the exception of one room. In that room, actually, there is a room that Dr. Platerian generally would use for Lego Lab, and it's kind of their home base right now, wouldn't you say, John?
Yeah, and it's, it's actually in, if you look at the stack of the building, it's actually on the front main wing, and so we were trying to get that a little further along to get that back for the Lego layout, but that's not going to happen, right?
So I know Mr. Robinson, our choir teacher, is very excited to be moving into what was his choir room, so it's, it's a finished product. I know we were doing a little bit of work in there today, but he is slowly moving into that space with new risers, so he's excited about that. So he's excited about that. Next week, we anticipate the scaffolding to be built in the boys' gym. So that will take them some time. They know the sensitivity we have to preserving the track around the boys' gym. So they are working to that end, but that will not start until next week. We hope. And they are presently preparing for the abatement in the east wing. We've, there were some things that we could take down and preserve. We're not sure what, correct what we're doing with some of the doors, but we knew that was part of our history. We talked about making tables out of them and all kinds of things, but that's part of our history. So we wanted to keep as much as we could without compromising any of the hazardous material. So the east wing abatement should, the preparations will take some time, but we're hoping that begins. John, would you say in the next two weeks?
I think the actual abatement will probably start in the next couple of days.
Okay.
They, they were in a hot and heavy day with the prepping the areas. They started protecting the hallway floors last week. Lockers already started going out. So they're, they've got, they're getting barricades built up.
They found a really old gym shoe behind one of those lockers, I think I remember.
I think so.
Was that worth, did they pass that along to the alumni group?
I'm, I'm not sure why that did.
Was that it?
It may still be sitting right there.
Okay, okay. That was one of the photos that we viewed. Okay, we'll start from the third floor and move down. And it is a bit of a water process, but they have assured us that they will have double enclosures just to ensure that the area is safe.
There will also be a representative from that parent on site to do the whole process and make sure that.
That's right.
Everything's maintained and people who aren't supposed to be in there don't go in.
The field house is coming along nicely. Our new date is for it to be turned over to us on November the 9th. And that would be really wonderful. I know Mr. Heinz is anxious to have that space back. We hope that it will be completely just stunning when it's finished. Sunny isn't cool with air conditioning because I know the athletes will appreciate that. And of course, when it's time for heat, we'll have that too. There was, we wanted to tell you a little bit about the elementary work because we're still working ahead, thinking ahead about that project. And John, did you want to share a little bit about that?
About two weeks ago, again, a representative from that parent came through and started taking samples. They, they showed up at 3:00 or 3:30 after the students and teacher had kind of started the vacay. And he would go through and take samples, plaster walls, flooring materials, plastics, pipe insulation, whatever materials he would find suspect and start to categorize them and send them out for samples. And we're, we're expecting a report to come back, hopefully in the next few days. It says what the materials are. Are they, will there be abatement involved before the construction? Or if they're safe and they can just be worked around like any other material.
Which school?
They started at Sharpsburg about two weeks ago. Then he moved to View. He was at Sharpsburg for three days and he was at Norwood View for two days. And then he was here for about two or three days last week. So I think he's got all the buildings wrapped up. We're just waiting for the reports to come through.
And that will help us to have a good idea of our scope moving forward so that that's represented in the budget.
We still trying to stage this right or are we going to try to do all three elementary?
That's under conversation and discussion right now, but it appears that the HDP would prefer for us to do one building. When I say one building, we, we look at Sharpsburg Elementary and Primary.
It's one.
I look at it as one building. They count it as two, but they, they have resigned themselves that they could, would work on both of those spaces at the same time.
Okay.
So we're working on our end behind the scenes to really vet what would be the next greatest avenue to move forward, and then we'll be bringing that to you.
I do have a question. You were saying that there were some pieces that we were able to salvage. Going forward, even with the elementary schools being as old as they are, would it be maybe feasible to take some of those items to auction off for maybe for our athletic department, pieces of our history that we could use as a fundraising tool? Or maybe for the alumni association to provide things towards graduation or towards after proms or something like that? Maybe we could use it as fundraiser opportunity?
It's certainly possible. I can certainly talk to Mrs. Camp House about how we would go about, you know, holding such an event.
Okay. I think it'd be kind of neat for some folks to grab a piece of that history. It might pull in a little bit of money. We just have to figure out a way to use it.
And store.
Yeah.
One of the things that was the handrails on the stairwell going up at that handicap entrance to the middle school. And I think I fully intend to put the handrails back up after, after the work is done. But it had to come off the wall to be protected from any water damage.
Oh, yeah. No, I think we can keep, I hope we can, you know, keep and use for sure.
Yeah, we're working really hard for the building to look the same, only updated.
Yeah.
But we're really working to, you know, keep its historical features. Those handrails have touched, I mean, how many kids have touched those handrails?
You.
And that's our, that's kind of our history, but that wood, that wood says something.
Yeah.
And so.
Well, even the pieces we have at Allison, you know, some of the wrought iron work, I mean.
Right.
We could definitely.
So I have a short video here for you, and I showed you one, gosh, months ago, but this one will show a lot more apparatus, if you will, on the roof of the middle school. And what I just want to emphasize is that phase one, we knew was the biggest component. It was all of the infrastructure, if you will, of the work yet to come in phases two and three and four. So just keep in mind that this represents much of that work. And when I get the opportunity, I'll, I'll stop. So you get the idea that, of course, generally this is over here where the marching band practices. Of course, now they're on the front lawn. So this is the front lawn over here. So we are affectionately calling this is our handicap entrance, where you would enter from the side of the building right here. Quite a bit of work has been done. I'll just stop there for a moment because I want to point out, this is our new elevator And in just a moment, I'll show you our new roof on the field house. So you can see there's quite a bit up there. We were able to get reimbursement for the third crane that was unnecessarily called for. So we knew that that would please you. Right here, you'll get a brief look at, at our field house and that roof there. So that's important. So, sorry, no music to that. Anyone want to see it twice? Okay.
I've been watching it every day. I'm back at Walgreens picking up hours. I'm watching the work every day out the window. It's, it's really cool seeing all the teams.
It is, it is fun to see it. There's lots of people working. If you follow my Twitter feed, we have a 1995 graduate who went to Desi Oaks. Actually, at the time, he learned about electrical, but he's now laying floor tile. And that's happening up in our third floor boys restroom. So I was able to talk with him a little bit and of course tweet his photo. We have a 19, 2001 graduate also doing some of the work in the building. So that's certainly rewarding that they say they're going about the work with certainly lots of love and honor. So we appreciate that. You see the new lockers in? We are not using all of them just yet. There are a couple of things that we're looking for. We of course need the locking mechanisms on each of them. We need numbers, and this will be happening within the next week, right, John?
Yes.
And then, of course, we have some tile work to finish up here and some wood trim to, of course, paint, more, more tile work here. These spaces here are where some duct port goes up through there. So that's why those spaces are there. The next photo I wanted to show you is of what will be the ground floor. So where you will come in from the girls' entrance, you'll walk straight through and you could get to what will be our elevator right here. So back in the day, these were wooden doors, kind of led you into the guts of the building. So this links you from the east side to the west side to some degree. So there were, for many years, there was a wooden ramp right here. I'd say it took you a good, would you say 36 inches?
Probably.
So now that is, for the most part, leveled out, but it's highly accessible. See a little bit of a dip here, and eventually all of this will be finished with a drop ceiling, nice lighting and things of that nature. So it'll look a little more finished. I kind of like the exposed brick look myself, but. So there's work being done, but as you can imagine, pouring that concrete was quite a feat. So that was poured and was already on its way to setting before the kids or teachers ever got here a couple of weeks ago. I think that was on a Friday morning, the way I remember it. So that is our update on construction. And Brad and Alex, you're, you're welcome. You have to say some policy update. You're welcome. We do want you to be fresh for tomorrow morning. So please go home and enjoy some dinner and time with your family. Mr. Heinz is a brand new little girl named Emily.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Four weeks on Thursday, so.
Thank you, John. Our last item for discussion is the always, it's always been a policy update. And I just want to thank Brandon and Val. They've donated an extraordinary amount of time and their talents, as well as Julie Christina, they also run that committee. And we believe we're close to the end of being ready to adopt those policies. So we've invited Ken Hickox here tonight to just talk to us a little bit about that process. And Val and Brandon, feel free to jump in.
Great. Well, I appreciate the opportunity to work with you on this project and also to be here tonight. And I just want to kind of give you an overview of how we got to what you have in front of you and then highlight some significant things that we did. So what I did in order to begin the steps to work with you is I reviewed your current policies in conjunction with your negotiated agreements, student handbooks and things like that. Okay? And then I worked off of our current manual that was up to date with all the, you know, legislative and legal changes. And so then what I did was we provided a first draft to the, to the district to look at and to review. And in that, we kind of showed, basically showed the bold and strike through what we're recommending adding and removing. And then we only did discuss policies that had substantive changes. I did look at every single policy in your manual, but we only discussed as a group the ones that I was recommending substantive changes to. But everything else was reviewed. Or if there was something unique to you, like really that I thought, let's take another look at this, make sure it's current, I made sure I highlighted that as well. And then we worked through each of those policies to make sure that the changes I was recommending, there were no questions or concerns on. And then also further customized as the district to reflect the district mission, philosophy and things like that. And so what, what you have, Kathy just gave you, is a sheet that says, it's kind of got these sections on it. And that's basically kind of a big picture summary of some of the changes we made. And so I created this tool for my district as something that can be helpful, especially for the whole board to look at, to have a good awareness of some of the significant decisions we made during those meetings. Okay? So, you know, and then you also, I did bring with me today, and I think you had the electronic copy already, but I did bring the hard copy of what we call the second draft. So that second draft is really was our goal, was to get that to be what you were comfortable then adopting as your updated manual as a whole. And so what I want to do today is I do just want to take a minute to walk through kind of some of the sections and just highlight some areas that I thought were some of the more major decisions that we made, in case you kind of want a, a starting point for what should I look at more closely so that I'm comfortable adopting this manual. Before I do that, did Valerie or Brandon, did you have anything to add on that process before I kind of start highlighting some of those, having gone through that?
No, I mean, I personally thank you for your expertise and all you've taught and and you made the process, you know.
Not totally painful?
It was not painful, it was very helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So what I want to do is, like I said, just highlight a couple of the things by section. And then if you all have questions on anything, on any policies, you know, let me know. And so you can just kind of see, so in addition to these changes I have in these little boxes, all those other changes that were reflected in the first draft, unless I said otherwise, were also accepted. Okay? So there's no way I would highlight all these here, but if you had concerns on any of that, you can always go back to the second draft, or me, sorry, the first draft to see what those changes were. So in section A, I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. The first I think is important for you all to look at closely is ADA, educational philosophy, as well as AE, school district goals and objectives. We updated both of those, and obviously those are key parts of your, you know, district operation. So we revised the educational philosophy a little bit. It was your original district language, we just made some updates to that. And then in school district goals and objectives, it looked like you actually had fleshed things out a lot more in the handbooks and not yet pulled those over to policy. So we took a version that was based more on those, that handbook language that was more current and then updated a little bit. The other conversation we had that I want to highlight and have it in bold here is the AFA, evaluation of school board operational procedures. So your policy previously said that you would do an annual evaluation of your board operations and procedures. You're not required to do a board self-evaluation, but a lot of boards choose to do that. And as part of the conversation is, you know, with everything you have going on, a lot of times it's not practical to take the time to do an annual appraisal. And so we kind of just basically took it back to, you know, carry through a periodic appraisal of your functioning as a board. There's a tool in there that you have, but that was just one point we wanted to make sure you all were aware of the fact that we took out the annual language and went to more periodic basis for doing that. Okay? Which I think is more reflective probably of practice too. So those were a couple of the things I wanted to highlight in A. Any questions on anything in that section? And my contact information is at the end of that document, so you can always reach out to me as you prepare for adoption with any questions you have. I'm going to jump to section B then, and I just want to highlight once again a couple of things. We did update the qualifications and duties of the treasurer policy to be more consistent, kind of updated that, streamlined that a little bit. So that is quite a bit different than what you had before, and that's BCC. The other one I really wanted to highlight specifically in B is the BDDH, public participation at board meetings. There were some language that I had recommended initially, maybe removing, but we looked at it and we kept some of that in regards to specifically complaints about employees. So I just had a note to kind of the committee too, to just make sure that how I revise that best reflects, you know, my understanding of what we wanted to do there. Any questions on anything in B?
I think the other thing I recall about that was just, I think it mentioned that they had to be a resident only.
Correct. Yeah. So we removed that because, yeah, thank you for bringing that up. So it didn't basically require them to be a resident.
I like them to be a resident.
However, so what I was going to say is because of, if it's open, if it's an open meeting, like technically it's an open meeting, any, anybody can come to that, right? And so when you set up a limited open forum in a, in a public meeting like that, there are parameters and you can kind of basically set restrictions on time, place and manner, right? But when it gets into focusing on limiting based on an individual's identity, which in this case them being a resident, that is not looked at highly by the courts essentially. So because it is basically, it is an open meeting. And so that is an area where.
I understand it's an open meeting, but it's our district. I mean, it's.
Correct.
It's a situation where I don't want.
You could have a parent who lives out of district, maybe the parents are divorced. Dad wants to come to a meeting to talk about Billy's sports and dad doesn't live here, but mom does, you know, or a teacher.
I understand, but we've also had situations where we've had people out of the district coming in to complain and that's, they, they come in to stir the pot, to cause problems. And it's kept situations from becoming issues because you can't stir the pot and cause problems if you're not a resident of our city. Love to hear from our residents.
Then I think.
But I'm elected by our residents.
Then it needs to be limited to a resident or have a direct contact with or reason to be here. Like my student goes here, I work within the district, but I don't live here. I also coach, you know, football, so I, I play your team.
In the past.
Those kind of things.
Well, see, I don't like that, no. That, to me, that's unacceptable. Parent, I get.
Okay.
Someone who's playing against us, you go to athletic director, you deal with them.
If it's an issue or something, I'm just saying.
You don't deal with them, but.
They would have to have a direct reason. They would have to have a direct reason.
That's been the issues we've had. People who have been athletic coaches that did not live in our district.
Coming to complain.
Coming to complain because they were terminated and they wanted to complain and stir the pot.
But we do get that form at the beginning of the meeting, so we can screen somewhat and say, you know what, this person was removed from our district and I don't feel that it is an appropriate place and context. And we could then refer them to Kathy or someplace where we can talk to them separately.
I just think it's, we're taking away a level of safety there that we probably shouldn't take away that we'll never be able to put back in. We can always vote to give them permission to speak if they was outside, make an exception to the law because we've done that.
Yeah. We also had investors that came, you know...
The challenge with that is you could be crossing into some potential open meetings and First Amendment issues there. And I actually happened to have a PDF of the sections based on some like case law and rules on that. And I'm just looking real quick. And so any kind of favoritism is, and so no, "Speech before the board may not be restricted on account of the identity of the speaker or any group which he may represent." And so...
Yes, we're not limited based on identity. We're limited based upon whether they're involved within our district as a resident of our community. Someone who lives in Cincinnati can't vote for us as a board. I don't, really, their input to our district really doesn't have any effect in my decision-making.
I think we would have to see on the form, because in some cases, our students are out in the community. Our students go to other schools, other districts. Their behavior at those events may become an issue. And I get they could come to the coach. But I'm saying, like, for example, if someone wanted to come to the board and say, look, you know, maybe they're very happy with how Norwood has been, or hey, we just wanted to come out and publicly thank you for hosting an event, we can't suddenly say, well, because you're not allowed to complain about us, you can't come and thank either, but...
Again, that goes through the AD and it goes through the superintendent. Those outside sources come to us that way. They don't come to us at a board meeting and say, I'd like to address the board. They go to our athletic director, they go to our superintendent, and they file their complaints and then they...
But you've had people before come and tried to start problems.
Yeah, people who used to work for the district who were terminated by the district.
Then I think that's... That's a sort of plea that is...
So would you have some language related to employee complaints? And so...
I'm just...
Correct, and I understand, and from a standpoint of knowing what... What I can do is I want to make sure this is the most current copy of what kind of a legal summary of what public participation you can and can't do. And I know it's in here, some specific opinions, like Ohio Attorney General's opinions and some case law are cited in here related to that language specifically on identity. So what I can do is I can pull some of that and send you the most recent information on that for you all to review, and then make a determination as to, you know, where you want to, how you want to move forward with that, restricting to citizens. And then based on what I find, there may be the recommendation to, if you want to add those restrictions to run it by your legal counsel, since it is an area where there's significant case law on. But I will pull those specific opinions and look at those. I do have the summary here, but, you know, for sake of time, I don't want to, you know, it does specifically relate to the identities of the individuals.
Can we do it open and say, you know, our meetings are open publicly to Norwood residents or those with direct ties to our...
You can't limit who the meeting is open to. So it's a public meeting.
We don't care about religion, we don't care, you know, color, sex, creed, but you would have to have a reason to be in the business.
So come to the meeting now.
To speak at the meeting. To come to a meeting, anyway. To speak at the meeting. Then we could say, you need to be, have a direct tie to the school, a student, or be a resident here in Norwood to speak at a meeting.
I don't think that looks good. And it feels like we're trying to hide or run from something, you know, run from something. And it didn't...
I mean, I don't care.
That's legal advice to do that. That's what we should do.
My thought is, is, you know, we go to other districts and other communities. And let's say, for instance, another district at a sporting event, they end up doing something that is completely horrid. And then I feel compelled as a parent in another district to go to their Board of Education to tell them how I feel about how a particular event occurred. I should be allowed to go before that board and speak my mind. And I shouldn't be limited to that. And we should hold the same courtesy in an open meeting, open forum session to other people. Now, we can limit based on the scope and time and availability, but we should not limit based on identity. I completely agree with how this is, how this is being read. If somebody from another district, if somebody from the city of Cincinnati wants to come to our Board of Education meetings and completely rail on us how bad we are, then for what, five minutes, we sit and listen to it. And then they're done, and then we move on.
See, and I disagree. And I've had the situations where things have happened in other districts and I've addressed the board, either via email or to the superintendent I've addressed it and copy board members, and then I've handled it that way outside of the board meetings because I have no business in their board meeting. This is an athletic situation. I contacted an athletic director, Kathy principal, Kathy superintendent. I have no business in the board meeting. I don't need to be involved. What you said is, they want to come and rail on us for five minutes, that's great. They come and stir the pot up in the city of Norwood, then they sit back in Cincinnati and watch as we fight amongst ourselves because of something they brought to the table that was really not an issue, that they made an issue, which did not involve them to begin with.
Why would we have to fight against ourselves?
What was wrong? We're going to fight against ourselves.
What does other districts do?
I generally recommend the removal of language related to restriction to residents based on what has been established case law and Attorney General's opinions and the fact that open meetings require to be open to anybody. And then when you do establish that, and I understand the public participation, but when you establish that, you basically can set some parameters in time, place and manner. So like the three minutes, agenda items only, you know, I mean, those type of things. But when it gets into, and I, you know, I'm trying to scan through here, but I mean, there's a lot of case law and Attorney General's opinions to look at in this, both related to sunshine laws and then some First Amendment rights as well. So, you know, and you can always, you know, will always defer to your legal counsel, too. If your legal counsel is comfortable saying, you know, residence or affiliation with the district, we defer to them, too. You know, my goal with this is just to kind of highlight to you that, you know, based on this review, I think it can be sometimes difficult to restrict because when you say, or school-related groups, even if you get into that or an interest in the school, how do you define that? So, you know, as a taxpayer in the state of Ohio, some of my money technically goes to you, right? So an individual could maybe argue that, you know, even I live in Columbus, some of my tax dollars go to you, and, you know, things like that. And I'm just playing devil's advocate here. Yeah, and so I'm happy to, what I'm going to do is I'm working off of a version that I think is from a couple of years ago with our Anderson School Law. But I'm going to pull and scan a copy of those, that section on public participation that you can read and review to have an understanding of kind of, you know, what is in place for that. And then I'm also going to try to pull the specific, look to see which of the cases or Attorney General's opinions be the most applicable to that area. And, because, I mean, you don't have to, I mean, you could just say, nobody talk, right? But then when you do, which isn't practical, right? But then when you do, there's only certain things you can do. So I think that would be a good educational piece for you all, too, to have that. And I'm happy to send that as you review the policies and the draft. And then if you have follow-up questions on it, let me know. Or, you know, if you have conversations with your legal counsel about something they're comfortable with, I can work with you to integrate that into. Do you think that would be helpful to you?
I'll do that tomorrow.
To have...
This is the first reading on these, so it's kind of a rush.
No, and that's why these conversations are helpful, so that I know what are the areas you have concerns about and how can I help you make those decisions. So I will work on pulling that together and sending it over to you to then share with the board.
Scott, it's entirely possible that we just take this particular policy and pull it out of this policy review and make it a completely separate one. That we can have a separate motion on.
If I'm the only one who's got an issue with it, that's fine. You guys can vote on it, and I'll vote my no, and I'll go on. It won't be the first time I voted no by myself.
No.
But I can't vote in favor of this with the way I feel about it. And I would like to hear some other feedback, but I'm perfectly fine with whatever the board decides.
Yeah, and I get that question a lot from people. And so that's, you know, I think it's good to have those resources to look at as you make an informed decision on it, too.
And I do have a question for you, just since I haven't read as much as these guys have on this. Obviously, Section A starts with an A, Section B starts with a B. I was looking at ADA and I automatically thought American Disabilities Act. And I'm like, that doesn't go with American Disabilities Act. So what is the breakdown of understanding what all these initials are in relation to the section? Just so I can follow.
Yeah, no, that's a great question. So our coding system for our policies is based on a national coding system. And so each, the first letter of a policy indicates the chapter it's in. The second letter indicates a major category, and the third indicates a major subcategory. So if you look at the big pack of the second draft you have in front of you, you see the index page for A, and you can kind of see AC is non-discrimination, and then ACA is non-discrimination on the basis of sex, and then ACA-A is sexual harassment. So it's kind of a natural progression there. Thank you. And so that's kind of an overview of how that coding is set up. Thanks for asking that. And then there are also regulations throughout the manual. So there are some times where you need a board-approved procedure to follow. So an example of that is for sexual harassment, you're required to have procedures approved by the board for handling sexual harassment complaints or reports. And so if there is a regulation that has a dash R after the code, so in that case, it would be ACA dash R or ACA-A dash R. So it's the regulation to accompany the policy. Does that help?
Yeah, it did. I'll still have to work through it all, but...
Yeah, and if you have questions on that, you know, let me know. So...
Chapter, category, subcategory, I can get that.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
And then there are also some that you see after the title, you see also, like in another code. So those are mirror policies that appear the same way in two different places. So going back to the public participation, while we're talking about, you know, Section B is your board operations, but Section K is your school-community relations. So if I'm a community member, I might go there first, right? Another example of that is staff-student relations. You're going to see it coded both places. So it's the exact same way, both places. So when you adopt one, you're essentially adopting both of them at the same time. So thanks for bringing that up. Other questions on the overall structure of the manual or coding? I apologize, I didn't do that at the beginning. Okay. All right, so those are the main things I wanted to point out in B. Any other questions in that section? All right, Section C, General School Administration. And I don't know why my computer is dying so quickly today, but it is. It's a Looner computer, so I had it plugged in until I got here, and I'm already down to 14%. Thank you. My other computer is... So sorry about this. I thought I'd at least get through this meeting, but it's amazing.
We know the feeling.
All right. Sorry about that. So Section C, once again, CBA, Qualifications and the Duties of the Superintendent. We did select the updated version that's more consistent with how it structures with the treasurer also. And then we did make some minor updates to your organizational chart. I know one of the conversations we had was, did we want to expand on that? You know, get more detailed in there or be comfortable with how it is? So I think, you know, just look at that and make sure you're comfortable with that in if you want to get to a lower level of detail in the administrative organizational chart there. Okay? And then we removed a policy. I tried to point out if we removed something, management team. It wasn't really reflective of practice, like how the district operates. And so that was one of the removed. Any questions on that? Section D, Fiscal Management. I did want to point out, first of all, DAB is now the code for your cash balance policy. So going back to kind of policies are either by category or subcategory. Where it was coded before was more based on like your investments, and it's not really tied to that, right? It's more like your overall goals of the district. So it was moved there. You still have that language, it's just in a different place. So that was something substantive I definitely wanted to point out. Let's see, what else I want to put out here. So we made some updates. There were several fiscal policies we had to really closely update based on federal requirements and then some new state requirements. So a lot of those tied to what's called the Uniform Guidance for How You Manage Federal Funds. And so those updates were incorporated in and really highly customized in your regulations for purchasing procedures, so DJF dash R. And then DJH credit cards, there were significant changes to management of district credit cards. And now everything does have to be authorized by the board. So nothing can be done outside of what's authorized by the board. So that's just one to keep a close eye on and just be aware that that board adopted policy has to define who can use credit cards and what specifically it can be used for. And I also give you that caveat because, you know, as treasurers get into it and actually implementing it, there may be times where they say, you know what, you know, this, we actually need this purpose here and that wasn't there, so let's go ahead and take a look at that policy and update it. So those are new statutory requirements for that. And then in expense reimbursement, ELC dash R, they removed the specific limits for types of meals and referred back to pre-approved limits because when an individual goes through like a professional development request, it's kind of determined at that time. And it may be dependent on if it's overnight travel or not overnight travel. So rather than trying to name, you know, 10 different situations in a policy, it goes back to what's approved before they incur those expenses. Okay? So those were a couple of things to highlight in D. Is there anything else, Julie, that you felt important to highlight in D? Or any questions you all had on anything in the fiscal management? Okay. So Section E, the first thing really, we cleaned up all the transportation stuff, so only took things we needed based on what you do. And then in EBCD, Emergency Closings, we did remove language related to Blizzard bags and those online makeups. So the conversation was, we're not doing it, we don't want to do it, so we took that language out. And then there was a policy you had adopted ECAC that actually does not apply to you. It's for districts who like career centers more applicably. So those were really the only other things that I wanted to point out in E. Questions on anything there? Section F, there really was only one thing I pointed out, and that was that we changed the policy title from naming new facilities to naming facilities. So recognizing that just because it's not a new facility doesn't mean we might not look at the naming of it. So I think it's better reflective of practice.
I did have one question.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, no questions.
It says they removed telephone services.
That was the form, yeah. So you do have the policy and regulations still, so there was a form, like a sign-off form. And I don't think it was even the accurate one, and so we've removed that.
Do they mean like district-wide or for specific...
Cell phones. It was related to cell phones, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So Section G, Personnel. One thing I like to remind people of is, in regards to your personnel policies, any policy that starts with a GA or a GB code applies to all staff, okay? And then if it starts with GC, it's professional staff, so your teachers and administrators are anybody with a license. And then if it's GD, it's your support staff, okay? So GA and GB, everybody. So like Family Medical Leave Act, you're going to see as a GD policy, right? And then GC, professional, GD, support. There were several policies in the Personnel section where there's a note that it was updated with like the August PDQ. They finally got rid of the highly qualified teacher terminology and replaced that, so we cleaned that up in several policies. Where now basically says properly licensed or certified. So that's reflected in several of these. The first one I really want to talk about a little bit is GBIA, Online Fundraising or Crowdfunding. And so we did keep a new policy on this that we released. It does allow crowdfunding campaigns in the name of the district. So crowdfunding are those online campaigns to raise funds. So if you've heard of Donors Choose or GoFundMe, those kind of, I post something in social media and I'm trying to raise money for something. And so there was an auditor of state report where he basically said, you should have a policy saying whether you allow this or don't, and if so, establishing some parameters addressing things such as student privacy, for example, and donations going directly to the district and not to the individual. So those are addressed within the policy, which is GBIA. And so that is new, and we did select the version saying these can be done, but here's the parameters. And those do have to be approved by the superintendent prior to establishing those. Yes.
Where did you say for qualified and certified? Which one was...
So GA and GB is all, and then GC is professional.
Didn't you say there was one that said specifically requiring properly licensed or certified?
Yeah, so that's several places. So that's GA. It's in the GA policy where I said it's the August PDQ changes.
For that language, is it possible to change it to qualified, not just licensed or certified? Because I have seen non-licensed or non-certified, depending on the field, it means qualified. It's your experience that...
But the terminology that they have in statute now, they used to say the highly qualified, and they specifically changed it to certified and licensed. And then when you go into the actual hiring...
People who are certified who are not qualified, so things.
But then you have, yeah, but so then you have the obligations too for like, when you have the, when you have the policies, especially in teachers, where you talk about the actual hiring and recruiting process, like determining that they're the best candidates and things like that. And so that, I think, is incorporated in through that. But the actual, they used to have, and it was in the federal law, where they had the definition of highly qualified, and so that was in state law, and they got rid of that. And so if you look at the, if you look at the statutes then, it then does go into detail on what they mean by certified or qualified. And so the licensure, they even have requirements specific to aides now, so they have to have had certain criteria. So it is fleshed out more in statute, and then in the hiring policies, it does talk about them being like, you know, the best candidates for the job and things like that, I think, to address some of that.
Okay.
So I would recommend you look at that GBIA, the crowdfunding policy. Any questions on that? I know that's kind of a hot topic issue. GCD, Professional Staff Hiring. There was a question here just about, we did confirm that the regulation, we had a regulation here related to retire, rehire administrators, and we just had a conversation that that was okay as is and the procedure you followed there, but that was just one I had to note to highlight. GCPA dash two dash R, Reduction of Professional Staff Workforce. So there was a conversation that we decided was probably better for, you know, maybe something to consider outside the overall review of the manual. State law allows you to adopt procedures for riff of administrators, so if you ever have to cut administrative positions. The language you have right now is primarily seniority-based, and the conversation was, is the type of procedure we would want to use if we ever did have to do an administrative riff. And so what I did was I emailed some options, some samples from other districts, you know, to Kathy to review. Law does require you to provide administrators an opportunity for input on the policy, okay? So if you decide you want to look at options, and you come up with an option you're comfortable with, you would just need to have that opportunity to review it with administrators or give them an opportunity for input prior to adopting that, okay? But as of now, you're following, you know, you would follow whatever you have as your board-approved procedure right now, but you have some resources if you ever want to look at that in the future.
So this is the policy. We have actually three different versions.
Yes.
So it's later down in the, in the policy section. There's an attachment with three different versions, you can read it, and then in the case of that point, we can discuss which ones you like. That will move forward.
So that's the GCPA dash two dash R, and it's not in like that hard copy packet. I did send it out separately, because I didn't want there to be any confusion in, you know, that whole, have the administrators input and which version. So, you know, and as you have questions on that, if you're like, we like this part of this one and not this part, feel free to continue to communicate with me, and we can customize it to what you want to then give to the administrators to review.
At what point do they review it? After we discuss, and then you roll it out to them, and then comes back to us in the class?
Yeah. It would need to happen before you actually adopted it. Any questions, other questions on that? And then there were a couple areas where I removed some language that was in a negotiated agreement. You'll see that pointed out. And so your negotiated agreement would supersede a policy, right? It has a higher legal weight than your policy, and so there were some things that we decided, rather than, you know, having concerns about things ending up in conflict, it was more appropriate to just stay in the negotiated agreement. So you'll see that pointed out some places. Questions on anything else in Personnel? Section H, Negotiations. There's actually only one required policy in here, so we actually took out several here. A lot of that, like, you know, the procedures, deadlines, all that's usually in your negotiated agreement. So we just kind of took that out and left a little bit more minimal policies there. So Section I, Instruction. Once again, IA, Instructional Goals. I wanted to point out, because we did customize that a little bit in the meetings, and so just, you know, take a look at that, see how it's a little bit different. IGCI, Community Service. We did change this terminology to, you have language talking about establishing community service education programs. It's a good option for districts, but it requires kind of a committee and things like that, and it's something the district's not currently doing. And so what we did was we changed it to the district may provide, and then that way it's, you know, in place for if you do it in the future. So that was just more reflective of practice there. In regards to your extracurricular policies, and IGDF is the first one I'll point it out, is the, or is the only place I'll point it out for now, but it's several other places. In co-curricular and extracurricular activities, we did leave the permissive options that you had still had. We had that conversation about non-resident participation. So, you know, the homeschool student from, you know, North College Hill or, you know, somewhere else who might want to participate in extracurricular activities here if they meet the statutory requirements. You don't have to allow for that. You have to allow for your resident kids, not non-resident. But we did have the conversation that that was something that was something you all wanted to still continue to have in there. Okay, so that is still in those athletics and extracurricular policies. We did look at IIAD, Supplementary Material Selection and Adoption. We did revise this, so these are those things outside the textbooks, and we did revise this to better reflect what actually happens for the approval of that process. The language before had a board involvement there, and that's not reflective of practice. And then I just had a note, we were wanting to look at it to see if there are any other questions on it, or if we wanted to make any updates based on like open source materials and things like that. So maybe you just want to take another closer look at before you adopt to make sure how it's written now gives you what you need to move forward with those supplementary materials. IPD, Honor Rolls. I did remove this because it's covered in the handbooks. I did want to point out, though, we did keep your class ranking policy, because I know a lot of work has gone into that, and you're kind of phasing it to a new program. So that is still in there, but the honor rolls, it was pretty general, and the handbooks go into kind of what those honor rolls are. And so we did remove that one specifically, but, you know, I had a note to myself, if you have concerns, the class ranking one that you've put a lot of time and effort into and is changing is still in the policies there. Questions on anything else in Section I, as you take a quick look at it?
The pictorial exercise?
Yeah, yeah. So we, we basically, if the sentence there started with, "The board does not require the daily recitation, but encourages it." So what we did was we took out "the board does not require", and we just said, "The board encourages," you know, "the recitation of the pledge on a regular basis." It doesn't say, the board's not saying there you have to do it every day in the buildings. It recognizes that administrators do it, you know, they try to do it, I mean, they obviously do it frequently, but you know, if there's a day where something happens, there's an emergency in the building, and you know, the pledge doesn't get done that day, it's not a violation of policy. But it didn't have the then, I think the concern was about the board having a statement, we don't require the pledge, didn't maybe have the best reflection on your philosophy on the pledge. And so we just changed it to, "We encourage it, the recitation of it on a regular basis." And then it still does have the language in there about, you know, if the rights of an individual say, you know, "I can't participate in the pledge," they have the right to opt out. You can't harass them because of that, so that terminology is in there.
As long as that's still clear.
Yes, yeah. All right. JECB Students. We did, in regards to, we did, in JECBC, we did keep some new language on, if a student is a homeschooled student coming into the district, what it means for them to be able to be selected for purposes of honors for graduation, okay? So clarify it specifically for them and be consistent with your class ranking policy too. JECBD, Introduce District Open Enrollment. This is the transfer between buildings, so really like one elementary building to another, right? And so there is language in law where you can allow students to permanently transfer to another elementary school, and we did keep that language allowing for that and not requiring to enroll on an annual basis. That seemed to be reflective of either practice or the direction you wanted to go for those students. JEFB, Release Time for Religious Instruction. We did remove this policy. This ties to end up students leaving during the school day to attend a religious instruction course somewhere else. You don't have to allow for it. You may adopt a policy allowing for it, and the conversations were, it's not anything you're doing. And I think there were some concerns about how to manage that with some of the new criteria in there, so we did remove that policy now. JGD, Student Suspension. There were, we did update this to reflect that suspensions are only appealable to the superintendent, not the board. You don't have to allow suspensions to be appealed to the board. Expulsions you do, but that, it is reflective of those just stopping at the superintendent. Obviously, they always have the option, they could go to court if they wanted to, okay? And then House Bill 318 is, what you see is this note on several of these discipline ones that talk about updated to reflect August PDQ changes. There's going to be a phase-in on some disciplinary restrictions for what you can do with students in grades 3K through 3, and for which situations you can suspend them. And then some new obligations for administrators to consult with licensed, um, mental health professionals prior to suspending students. So those that are, so sorry, licensed health professionals contracted by the district prior to suspending students in those grade levels. So the phase-in is going to happen on restricting the 3K 3, this is kind of a benchmark year, and so continue to look at these discipline policies to be revised over the next few years. But right now, you're kind of in this phase-in process for that, and that's related to some House Bill 318 changes that took effect just in September, okay?
I do have a question. I'm not sure where it would necessarily fall, but sometimes with these types of changes, it can affect our graduation requirements. For example, when I graduated, my senior year was the first senior year to have the state testing switch years. However, the graduation requirement policy did not change. So everyone that was on track to graduate with honors, meeting, you know, checking all those boxes, suddenly can't check that final box because the test wasn't being offered. The board did nothing to step in to make a change to allow for those students to make up the difference. Is there a, I don't know which one it would fall under, but is there a policy that would allow that if any of these changes were to affect our graduation requirement for our students, whether it's by testing, community service, any honors or that, would we be able to then make a snap judgment decision based on things that could be implemented that would affect our graduates?
Yeah, that's a good question. So Policy IKF, Graduation Requirements, refers to graduation requirements. And in there, you're going to see, and...
It says removed, so that's why I was wondering.
No, that's, so that's a regulation. And so that was, I believe, and I would have to go back to it, so IKF, Graduation Requirements, is still in there. The regulation, and I can pull up exactly what it was, I apologize, I'm trying from the top of my head, but it was, I believe it was related to, it was, I think, related to honors diplomas, because the challenge with that, it talked about grade classifications, and then it had some language on some different types of honors diplomas, but not all. So there's actually six different honors diplomas now, okay? And those are codified, right? So Ohio Administrative Code says, here's, and revised code says, "If you want to earn an honors diploma, here's the criteria you can meet." When they have been adopting that, and the same thing, like with graduation requirements, is it goes back to the student's first date as a ninth grader, essentially. So if they enter ninth grade honor after a certain date. So what we do when we update the policies, and we, if there's different criteria, we kind of put an asterisk or, you know, denote it as to it's based on their entrance date into ninth grade. And so then, as far as practically implementing it, you would go back to the criteria they were held to based on that entrance date. The same question...
But if that is like for me, the test was taken away. So there was no me meeting the requirement I was given as a ninth grader.
Yeah.
So how are we given the opportunity to make up?
Part of that goes back to the state. And so if the state doesn't offer that assessment, then, you know, and I know they have been, I think, more cognizant of it now, so they're phasing, they changed some of the science stuff and the course exams, and they kind of have options available for kids based on an entry date still. And then when they changed the honors diploma requirements, they did give an option in there to say, if you entered at this date, you could go either pathway, or if you entered this date, you're subject to that one. So I think that the legislature has, and OD has recognized that a little better.
Okay.
And so I think that's being addressed in some of those specific areas. Now, if you have something locally that you've added as an additional local criteria, like if you, that's where I think that you make it clear that it's for this, and I think if you go to, when you do that date of entry rather than date of graduation, it's cleaner, because what if you have a kid who graduate early or whatever? But that would be something to just keep in mind. If you start adding local criteria, make sure it's clear it's based on the entry date, and then if you ever do decide to drop something, determine then, and maybe then write it in policy, what you will do for kids who entered on that date but may not graduate on time. Does that help? Does that make sense? Okay. Right. So Section J, the other thing I wanted to point out is in JO, Student Records, we did update the definition of directory information. So if you have a request for directory information that students can opt out of, but those lists that you share, we did remove phone number, date and place of birth, and dates of attendance. So I didn't have those listed specifically here, but those are the ones we chose to remove, was the phone number, date and place of birth, and dates of attendance. So there was a concern about giving kids phone numbers out, you know, date of birth, potential concerns about identity issues, and, you know, that was, we kind of cleaned that up to help protect the kids. And then we also reflected it, updated it to reflect the fact that you don't charge fees to kids for student records, but if you ever do, it would be done in compliance with law. And then the other thing, JP, Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports, otherwise more frequently known as PBIS. This was, there were some changes, legislative changes to this as well, and there's going to potentially be some state board changes that are going to impact the district, so we're keeping that on our radar. The state board's going to have to update, state board of education's going to have to update their framework and some of their rules. So as those are adopted, there may be some additional changes to this PBIS framework they're implementing. And then Section, any other, any questions in J? Anything that you had specific questions on that I didn't highlight? Some of these that I had a note that it was updated to reflect August PDQ changes, a lot of these, so for example, like hazing and bullying, some of your food service forms, they created what's called a, legislature created a consolidated school mandate report. So OD has to have all these items kind of put into one report. The districts have to say whether they're complying with or not. So it was updated to reflect that, because if a district says they're not compliant, then the superintendent or their designated within 30 days has to give a report to the board on why they didn't do that and what the plan is for addressing that. So that's going to be reflected in several of those different policies. Okay. So Section K, School Community Relations. KG dash R, Community Use of School Premises Equal Access. We did just update that regulation to better reflect your current practice for the community use of school facilities, and so those were incorporated in there to make it consistent with what you're doing. And then KMB, Relations with Booster Groups. We, I worked, we had a conversation about the fact that you don't want the booster groups being responsible for actually doing any kind of construction on district property, right? So that they could accept donations for projects if the district wanted to maintain control of that. And so I did revise the policy to reflect that, and I just had a note here that, you know, to just double check it to make sure that how I revised it accurately reflects what you want that to reflect there, okay? And then Section L should be pretty easy to look at, because there were no real substantive changes outside of the ones that I would have marked up or decisions that we made. So that was just, like I said, I wanted to highlight a few of those, and I know they're kind of bigger changes maybe, or bigger decisions that we, the committee made. And then what I would recommend is this, this little summary document could be a helpful tool. And then if you want to go back to the nitty gritty of everything we looked through, that first draft shows the bold and strike through of everything that was recommended. You know, that could be a tool if you want to look to that level as well. And then if we rejected any of the things I recommend, that's what I pointed out here, right? So, or if we made a decision on something, this would be in addition to those.
And KJ dash R, the Advertising in Schools, it says that that one was removed. Does that have any bearing, okay, will it have any bearing on like our sponsorships that are affecting us? Because obviously it'll say like, Skyline's Student of the Week, or, you know, Senior Sponsored by Jimmy Johnlands, or something. Like, will that be something that we can't do, or will it affect us?
So, the, the regulation actually went to the level of detail of like, how long contracts can be and things like that. So it's a lot more detail than we wanted to have there, because it could be, you know, depending on what they're doing, you might want a different length of a contract than another. So that was some of the details. The thing to be aware of, though, with advertising is, advertising in regards to like food and beverage can only be done for items that meet what's called beverage can only be done for items that meet what's called the Smart Snacks rules under USDA. So I don't think that them like promoting this athlete of the month may be as much of a concern. If you haven't put a blanket like Skyline Chili advertisement permanently on your scoreboard, that could be a concern for being in compliance with your USDA regulations. So, but it wasn't that level of detail. It set some kind of detailed parameters for more like the actual approval process and contract length and thing length, things like that. But yeah, there is a requirement under the USDA regulations that advertising does have to be in compliance with that. Now, if you have advertising that was before those provisions took effect, that can be grandfathered in.
Because I've seen scoreboards and stuff with those.
If you already had a scoreboard that had like Coke, you know, unless you take down that scoreboard or something, you're okay, you know, moving forward. If they say, hey, we want to sponsor Coke, they may have to sponsor, you know, advertise for Dasani Water instead. But yes, those are the new regulations now. Is there a, you know, is there USDA police coming out to audit on that and for compliance? I don't know. But, you know, my job is to say, hey, here's what the new-
But to have it not there, we can just make our decisions to have senior bankers or use a student act. We don't have to worry about any of it.
Yeah.
Okay. Cool. There's some flexibility there.
Yeah, so they're, again, remember, there's the policy, and then there's the regulation. And the regulation is more of like a day-to-day how to do this, and that's better handled under our handouts.
And we do try to keep those minimal. You'll see, you won't see a ton of them in the manual, and generally if it's in there, it's either required or strongly recommended. So like hazing and bullying, you have to have procedures. Field trips, it's strongly recommended to have some procedures, so we do try to keep those minimal. Other questions? So this was helpful. As you move forward through viewing things, feel free to email me or call me. The phone number on that sheet is my direct line. If I'm not in the office, it forwards to my cell phone too. So if I'm not traveling or working from home or something, it'll get me there. I have a bug here. And then, you know, you can always email me with any questions too. So anything else, those of you on the committee that you want me to address or-
I appreciate your expertise. Certainly, we're policy specialists. We appreciate that. And we have a little bit of work to do, so we'll get back in touch with you on our next steps.
Okay. And I'll pull that information on the public participation too. And then if there are other policies as you look at it that you need a little bit more background or information on, let me know, and I can, you know, pull resources for you or answer specific questions too on anything you have.
All right. Great. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Sorry, safe travels. Thank you. Sorry, someone a little long here.
Policy is something that deserves our attention, and we appreciate your expertise and-
Well, thank you. And then I do just, you know, stay on top of the PDQs, but we do still, even with that, recommend a full facilitated rewrite every five years to identify some of those things like philosophical changes, operations changes and things like that, and then just do a refresher for the whole board. So hopefully I'll see you in another five years, right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Five years.
Well, I mean, it was really helpful because there are a lot of policies that, you know, we're looking over there and we go, we never do that.
It was really nice that it-
And this is the pair bound, and this is the not pair bound.
That's the pair.
Yeah, so how much? How much figure was it?
I've done figure really-
It's actually extraordinarily interesting. And going through the process really did make us sit down and read it because it would easily be that something that's on your list for months that you just don't seem to get. So it actually was really interesting, and I enjoyed the conversation around it. It was actually a lot of fun.
It was.
It's a good twist to just say that, but it was a lot of fun.
It was great too that it referenced our union agreements and our handbooks so that we didn't have to page through even your documents.
Yeah, it was all of that too, so.
So I thought that was helpful.
It ended up being perfect timing because August PDQ is huge, so it was like the perfect time for us to do this so we could just scoop that all up at the same time.
Yes. So you're on a pretty good sheet. We're not going to be pushing a ton out in the November issue. There's nothing really major, so like no legislative changes. I think we're just doing some cleanup on a couple of policies. So, yeah.
On our next steps, we'll be investigating our job descriptions, things of that nature. They have a, a building organization that can help us with that. So we'll turn our eye to that next.
Well, thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, I'll let you get to the rest of your business. Thank you all. Thanks.
Thank you.
On the job description, we root things like referencing the-
Yeah, because.
Thank you. There's some Easter.
Moving on, let's see, Educational Committee, cameras?
All right. We have the upcoming meetings for the LPDC listed for Monday, October 22nd, November 19th, January 14th, February 11th, March 18th, April 15th, May 6th, and May 20th, all Mondays. So those are the upcoming educational things, and that is it.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next, we have retirement that, from Mr. Jim Greer, and he's retired in January. We also have for employment, a student assistant, educational aide, as well as a number of mentors. And notice, you know, one F T means one person they're mentoring. And you see two, that means they're mentoring two people. You see career education coordinators, and changes status, folks moving from attendant three hours a day to six hours a day, and of course, one of our educational aides increasing, she's moving to a different position. And I believe that is it for education employment. You brought everybody up today, I mean, so she answered one. Dana?
I don't know that I did tell one. We do have a teacher who's ill, and we're really working, just as a community, a school community, to support her. She's a minor grad, we all love her dearly. Last year, she went through treatment, and she continues to go through treatment, but last year she went through treatment. We had a teacher in the room with her. That way, on the day she had treatment, his children, it's all the same, smiling face, and really their, their experience remained a bit of a constant. And so this year, we have elected to provide the same opportunity, and it seems that the teacher is missing more and more time. So we're just hoping for healing and a miracle, and at the same time, providing a high level of quality education with the children because those are our obligation. Not only is Norwood citizens and Norwood graduates and people that care about Norwood kids, but just their education is very important to us, as well as their wellbeing. So all of the children in that classroom never receive a personal phone call from the counselor as well as the principal at that building. And we're continuing to monitor all of it and just do our very best and hope for the best.
Policy. So-
Do you have some new ones?
We just went through 40 ones. But one thing I'd like to highlight here is one of the attachments in, online for us to look at is the GCPA-2-R samples. So that's the regulation that, what's her name?
Ken.
Ken, was that GC? Yeah. So, so there's three different versions in there, and we should take a moment to read through. Now, I've done that, and I like version two. And we read through the three different versions. I think it matches the structure and the language in some of our other stuff that we're going to be putting through. But if there are things that, as you read through these, like something in version one that we would like to see in another version, or if we want to mix these up, this is an opportunity for us to kind of take a look at that. And again, after we pick what we would like to see here, then we have to give this to the administrators for their review.
Is there anything else on there you guys think we need to really look at or focus?
Well, you know what's-
When you guys want to roll this.
We did.
You probably would, you're like, you know, look at, but is there anything?
And I have to tell you, I got a huge educational experience coming from, coming from the, you know, professional environment into a public school setting. So the way that I see things work and operate on a daily basis is how it works and operates here. But, but no, I definitely think that especially for, you know, how we address public meetings and who can speak, I mean, you know, take a look at that, and if this is something as a board that, you know, we want to pull out of this policy review draft and, you know, take our time to get it right and address it separately, let's do that. Let's do it the right way. And I would encourage everybody to, as much time as you can give yourselves, go through this tone and feel comfortable with what we're passing because, like she says, other than the PDQ changes, I mean, this, this is a framework by which we're going to operate our district for the next five years. Let's do this.
What about version two stuck out to you the most in terms of difference? Because obviously there are going to be tweaks to each one.
It wasn't because, you know, version one is our policy as it currently stands-
Okay.
-with the strike throughs and the bolts. And then version two is the changes that we agreed upon.
Okay. And then version three is just-
Oh, no, you're talking about the-
For the three you wanted to sort of look over.
Okay.
You said you liked version two.
Yeah, I like, I like version two.
So I'm just, I'm curious as to which, which bit of language did you like or thought stood out the most that we would need to pay attention to?
So what I like for version two, other than the other ones, just scroll down here, is version two is a much more concise, it's a less wordy version.
That seems to kind of fit almost on one page there.
Right. And it actually identifies, you know, in very plain language, some of those specific reasons. I think some other versions, there is a little bit more ambiguity, and I think could lead to some gray areas. And I think version two is a much more black and white, clean and dry. Now, I would, and I've mentioned this a couple of times, but for next week's meeting, I am going to be attending. I'll be in Dallas attending, so I've asked Valerie to kind of go through the policy section on behalf of me.
I will also be gone at next week's meeting.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
Oh, wow. Okay.
Would this be one that may also lead with one of those?
Well, I'm out all week.
Oh.
I'm out from the 15th through the 19th.
Yeah, we're voting on anything.
Oh, we're not voting on anything?
Not policy wise, especially about policy wise. It'll just be the first reading.
It'll just be the first version reading.
So it would be, okay.
I was just saying, because I can-
And they'll also get three.
If we needed to, we could move it to the 25th instead of the 18th, but-
It's like the first reading, second meeting.
Yeah.
It does make sense.
Okay.
Let's see, votes of grants, just had one for the, our chief manager, RCA, please give. Treasure report. As much as I like to go on and on and on about the treasure report, I'm going to pass it over to Stu Laidner.
All right. I'm going to do the presentation.
Do you want to use this?
Those are just extra copies.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sure they have one there. That's right, the blue folder.
Hopefully I'll get through it fast enough with my computer down.
Well, she's getting set up. I have some fantastic news to share. Mr. Hines just shared with me that Mattie Baker is our 2018 cross-country champion. She just finished the race. And that is for our conference, for our entire conference, so I'm pretty proud of him later.
I just learned that she may be joining his team this year.
That's awesome! That's great!
Does she have a record that's going to be too?
No, it doesn't have to be.
Be that fast in the water?
Doesn't matter. She's, she'll figure it out.
Water is the great equalizer.
Yeah.
Use it. You can sort it there, though.
That's pretty cool.
It's great to get them dried and-
Oh, it's perfect. Perfect for her.
Oh, hard?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a great off-season maintenance activity to, cardio.
And if I said wife, then I know. Absolutely. If you don't mind, we're going to need to plug mine in because I'm about to die.
Okay, you're getting ready. I just thank you, you're welcome.
Right.
What's my words for the day?
What do you want to learn today? Yeah, you learned bullshit last week. Oh, I know. So for today, an honor today, so this thing is a book, okay? And it's about policy. So this is the letter P, and it tacks twice. So this would be rule, policy.
Can you use your middle finger to do that?
Can, or you can use the pressure one, but this is kind of awkward, so let's just do. So policy, just like rule, so policy book.
Rule. There we go.
There you go.
Fair enough.
See?
I like this.
So we're learning each week.
It's meaning something though.
I've signed so much with my students that when I got home, I couldn't even do it sometimes. And my husband's like, hey, I can hear you. Stop it! Stop!
So you're going to have to send us something for next week.
Just send something. We can do that.
Good teacher. It's okay. You're behind. Thank you. You're behind.
We decided, unfortunately, we caught, we caught scat.
I'm sorry.
This one. So this was fun. Bull's horns. So I thought it would be like, so B X, four X, I guess, we didn't like B X. Or this one.
It's all bull's horns.
So if he's ever meeting, talking to you like, you know, I always think that taking one of the bullies.
One of our children there too, that will be recognizing that first group of rising stars. I know, I love that.
Have they been notified yet?
Actually, I've just signed their letters tomorrow.
So why don't we do one in September? It's just not, we don't have enough to do.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're still figuring out who the stars are. Well, if anybody's not busy Friday, if you's having the fall test, you know, stop by.
Nobody got back to me about coming to work.
I retweeted that.
No, to paint faces. You asked me, you didn't message me about it.
You want to do it still?
I'll have to check my schedule. I think I can.
Okay.
You have somebody to paint faces?
Well, there's a mom that always volunteers, but she just does really tiny things and the kids don't like that.
I'll paint faces. It was rush. I'll have to talk to her. I'm more of a- But she can face.
What time?
Can she email to me? I'll text her.
Okay.
Yeah, let me know.
I'm subbing on Friday, so I'll be out of school at the same time anyway. So, I'm subbing tomorrow too.
3:30.
I'm done at 11:00.
It's a big cookie.
I'm subbing down there as well.
So I think you're invited.
Oh, good.
Well, trust me.
It's like a lot of it. I'd say a third of the month I'm subbing down there. So we've got to be student, and we're trying to figure out the schedule for accommodations for students. So every mention floating, hoping for best.
Well, I'm only on a personal day just because I don't want to be hung up in any of that business. So I'll still be working in the morning, and then go to that and come back. Yeah. Okay, so we are reviewing the forecast tonight for the October 2018 forecast. You all have folders that have a copy of the forecast and the assumption and the PowerPoint just in case who wants to review it again after tonight. There are three things I want you to take away from this discussion. The forecast, this forecast has a somewhat better bottom line than prior forecasts. Revenues are up about 130,000 for this year and expenditures are down about 172,000. So overall, we're about 300,000 better than we expected to be in May for this year. Secondly, we are spending more than, than we bring in every year in the forecast. And while that's very alarming, our cash balance is sufficient for the first full three years of the forecast. So it gives us some time to make changes and hope for better. Also, remember the forecast just estimates the general fund. All other funds are considered self-sufficient or should become self-sufficient. I will be comparing the current October forecast to our prior May forecast during this presentation, but I also will be comparing year-over-year results. If I don't make that clear, please ask me. And also at any point in time during this presentation, please ask. It's much easier to win back an answer or question. So this statement right here is an income and expenditure statement. It's a very brief fiscal picture of the forecast. You'll see the first column is this year, followed by four years in the future for the forecast. The first line item is our beginning balance. You'll see we started the year at 10 million 4,000. The second line is our expected revenues for each year. You'll see in the last two years of the forecast, our emergency levy will be expiring and we are on the forecast, we're expecting it to be renewed as is. That may not be what happens, but just for the forecast, that's what I have in there for now. Then the third line down is our expected expenditures for each year, followed by the most important line on the forecast, as always, are we expecting to spend into our carryover or are we going to add to our carryover balance? Finally, the last, the last line before the dark blue or the dark black line is our expected ending balance. And then below the dark line is what happens to the forecast if we don't renew our levy, our emergency levy. So if nothing else, the forecast proves that we have to renew our levy, our emergency levy. This, this spreadsheet, this graph, it shows our cash balance for the general fund. The very tall line was last year. The next bar to it is this year. So you'll see that we have several years what we've added to that cash balance. And that's always a really good thing to do when you can, so you have cash to draw and, and years that are not as good. So you'll see that we do have quite a bit of cash balance that will carry us through several years as we make adjustments to our budget. This document compares the October forecast to our past May forecast. It's just for revenues. And you'll see, if you can see from there, those line items are very terrible. Real estate taxes, we're expecting about 375,000 more. Unrestricted grants and aid, which is just state funding, is about the same. Property tax allocation is slightly lower. All other operating revenues are lower, as I expect a little less TIF money coming in than we thought we would have in May. So like I said before, overall, we expect just 130,000 more than planned in the May forecast. I really like this graph. This is a simple reminder of where do we get our money from operating. You'll see in the pie at 51%, that dark blue is our real estate tax revenues. The next largest is unrestricted aid, again, state funding at 26%. And then all other revenue at 10%. And the great majority of all other revenue is TIF payments from local businesses that are exempt or have abated taxes. So Ms. Campbells, when you talk about real estate, that's just homeowners? Does that include businesses? That's businesses too. Businesses also? And we'll talk about that a little bit. I have another graph in here where we'll talk about our values. So we'll go over that a little bit. So here's our real estate tax revenues. And again, this is residential and commercial, both class one and class two. The dark blue lines are actual. And where there looks like there's quite a bit of variation there, most of that is due to one-time payments or settlements. So really, our tax revenues are very steady once you take out those one-time payments and those kind of variances. So for 2019 in the wider blue and forward, you see I'm projecting a little bit of growth. And then again, the emergency levy in that teal color jumps right out to where we need to renew that emergency levy. This is the document I talked about. I wanted to talk about our values by type. So you'll see that more than half of our value, and that's the total of all the properties in our district, whether it's commercial or, that's what we call it, is the valuation. So more than 55% of that valuation is based on residences. So those are people's homes. 40% is class two agriculture, of course, we have none. And personal property, public utilities at 5%. And that's just a tax on the personal property that's like gas lines, electric lines, maybe you might have a substation, something like that. So it's a very small amount of our valuation. I did want to talk a little bit more about this here. So if all of our abated properties, which is our class two properties, our businesses, if all those properties were added back, our class two would be much higher than our class one because we have some significant commercial properties in this district.
And this doesn't take into account the reevaluations that were currently under the wave?
The 2017 valuation is what this slide is based off of. And that's, that's a very good intro to my next topic that I want to add about this. Our total valuation is about $400 million, our total valuation. In 2017, our tax duplicate went through a revaluation, all of Hamilton County did, and we saw almost a 12% growth across the board, exceeding our 2006 pre-recession valuation. So we, we saw immediate growth in 2017 that exceeded 2006, which is just great. Prior to 2017's revaluation, we had not seen growth since 2008. So we, we had seen steady declines in our valuation until 2017. Of course, increases in valuation do not equate to increases in revenue because of House Bill 920. These increases have dropped our mileage rate almost to the floor, so we should start seeing inflationary growth in taxes again, which is really great. You remember the most basic, the most basic way to come up with tax revenue is valuation times the mileage rate. However, it gets a little more complicated because when your valuation grows by inflation, your, your tax rate, your mileage rate is going to drop because of House Bill 920 that says no inflationary growth for school districts, which is why people have to continue to go on ballot for more money because we have no inflationary growth built into our taxes. So when that happens, your mileage rate drops to the floor. The floor is guaranteed, but a state, all school districts must be supported by at least 20 mils of valuation. So at that point, when our valuation goes up, our mileage rate's going to stay the same. We'll see a little bit more revenue. Very long, long-winded explanation of there's a little bit of hope for our real estate revenues to increase. Okay, so our state revenue, the dark blue lines again are our actual. You see, we saw a tiny little increase in 2016 and the state study for 17, 18, it dropped back down, 19, I expect it to stay stable. The reason it's stable is because the state gives us part of our funding through a guarantee system, which is just saying, because we have defined an enrollment, we're going to continue to give you revenue at the same rate that you got in prior years. So if the state were having to change that guaranteed funding, we might see new comments though. But I do not have that forecasted. So again, on our state funding, the spreadsheet shows how we're funded on the guarantee. Right now, the state is saying that they want every school district to get $6,020 per student. And then they further divide that up and say, there's a local share and a state share, a state share. For us, it's at 41.4%, meaning we only get $2,495 per student. On top of that core funding, we get 104,000 in guaranteed payments. The rest of the spreadsheet just shows that I expect the guarantee payments to continue. I do not see increasing enrollment, but decreasing enrollment.
So I'm going to challenge your numbers. If you go back and you look at last October's fiber forecast, in 2022, we had forecasted an enrollment number of 2148. And you have 1826.
Okay.
The year before that, 2021, we forecasted 2138, you have 1879, and so on and so forth. So your, your numbers are drastically dropping. So I went and did some double checking on my own. So I went and did a census search, census.gov. And for the community of Norwood, for the city of Norwood, there are a total as of 2017 of 3,696 people under the age of 18. Now, under the age of five, which wouldn't count towards our numbers, there are 1,212 as of 2017, which leaves a balance of district age qualified kids at 2,484. And the population growth for the city of Norwood is increasing by 3.6%, which means that, you know, if those numbers hold true, by the time we hit 2023, your forecasted enrollment number is going to be off by 786 kids. That's enough for the entire building.
The thing that's different, because I use live birth rates in the forecast, and then we compare those live birth rates to, how does that compare in the past to our actual enrollment numbers? So I don't expect 100% of the children in Norwood to show up when they're five years old for kindergarten. That's the big difference.
I, I don't think so either, but is that difference going to be in 2023, 800 kids?
Well, this is based on actuals. We've got about eight years of history in the forecast, or probably more than that since it was Ernie doing it. That shows how many kids were actually enrolled and attending in Norwood.
Well, I mean, based on those enrollment numbers, and I'm going to be quite frank here with this group, we have, I mean, that scares me to no end. I mean, because losing a potential, I mean, even if you just look at the seven, 1,786 number versus where we are today, I mean, that's half of the building. You know, your student to teacher ratios are going to be fantastic. I mean, but our cost to educate per pupil is going to be astronomical, especially if we have the same square footage. So, I mean, and then at the same time, we're in the middle of a permanent improvement project where we're going to be redoing every building. And then in five years, we may not have the capacity to fill every building. And then we're going to shut down a building that we just remodeled?
We also want to work on enrollment, improving the numbers for kids who are leaving our district or... So we want to retain, I, I would assume we're not losing 800 kids to other schools. I would really hate that we're losing 800 kids to other schools.
So apparently four or five hundred, the numbers.
If the numbers are right, I mean, you know, if.
But if we get this improvement on track, then hopefully we'll get more retention also. And we'll encourage those kids to, to stay here or enroll here.
The way, the way I look at this is, and look at these numbers, is either we make a priority to increase enrollment or, or we shrink our district rapidly before, within the next three years. Because I'm telling you, even with the levy reasonable as it stands right now, it's not going to be enough. I mean, we are too heavy of a district, the number of the kids that are in it.
That's an excellent summary. It truly is, and that's something that every school district has to look at every single year. Do I, do I rehire for the teachers that are leaving? Do I have class sizes that need these teachers? It's something that's just a constant, constant thing that that administration needs to look at.
So we'll make the commitment to get more kids?
Make the commitment to get more kids or, you know, because I poured, I poured over this most of the day today. And if, if we can shrink, if we can shrink our expenditures by about $2 million, I think that would put us in a much better spot for 2022 to 2023.
Great. And there are some reductions in the forecast already. I just can't be too hopeful for reducing the expenditures. I have to, I have to see some of that happening before I can really, you know, plug it into the forecast.
We got to plan for the worst and expect and hope for the best. And hope for the best, but you got to, but you got to plan for it.
Going back to what Ernie has always taught us, the best way to avoid a forecast was, or best time to avoid a forecast, uh, levy, thank you, that was five years ago. Thank you, someone listen to Ernie. So we're looking at five years time, oh, now's the time to be acting like you're saying.
Yeah.
This is how we avoid going back to the voters in five years, we start now and what?
And you still are going to have to go back to the voters.
You're going to have to, but.
It's not going to hurt us that.
It's absolutely, so.
I would say the worst case scenario, we have to renew the emergency levy. That's, that's.
Oh, you're going to have to do that regardless.
Yes, that's what I mean. So then, after a couple of years of trying to, to reduce the size of the district or bringing in more students, and, and say, a year, two years from now, we can make a decision what kind of levy are we going to run if we need to have some more money? And it looks like we may have to.
And we're going to be looking at, you know, possibly Montessori option. The other option maybe, if we're looking at downsized building space for square footage, I would recommend, like, closing down the primary, absorbing the primary students into the square footage of the buildings that we already have, and either selling that property, making it into, you know, a storage lot for some of our facilities, a practice space, a community space, something like that, where we could absorb the kids into our main buildings and, because it's a small building. We don't necessarily need it. It would be, I think, an easy thing to do, to make a change there, would start with the primary. Or we adapt the primary to become our Montessori building, if, if that's an option that we want to go with.
So.
And absorb our preschoolers and kindergartners.
So Montessori, I mean, you're still looking at the same kids in the district?
The kids who are leaving the district, we, we think, and I think this is going to happen with our meeting, is I think the biggest chunk of those numbers of that, of the hundreds that we're losing are going into Montessori option.
So, so.
So I think that's what we're working on.
So 2,484, based on the census data, is, is where we stand right now. Our current enrollment is what, November 1900?
2014 is what I had in the forecast, estimated for this year.
Estimated for this year. Do we have actual numbers so far?
We have actual, and I've plugged them into the forecast. It's just by the time, it, it's a really complicated formula on who you get paid for and who you don't get paid for.
So, so that's a difference of.
Who's physically here or somewhere else.
Right, so that's, that's, that's a difference of 400 kids. So if you open up a Montessori program for 400 potential kids in the district, I mean, how many of those do you technically capture?
I'm going to say, yeah.
That's, that's. That's what we're going to start with.
You know, to kind of investigate and see where this leads us and hopefully to capture it is, you know, higher than we think, than we've anticipated. But I think we're looking at, not necessarily that they're leaving for Montessori, but they're leaving for private options. And what can a Montessori do to sort of offer those?
A little bit better looking to those families who want something different for their kids than a normal public school setting. And then once they get into our Montessori program, hopefully they see the benefit of being in our community schools that are small, that do have low class sizes, and, and our one-on-one approach with our teaching staff, just people brave about our teachers. I really think that if we can retain those kids day one, they'll stay, you know, through their 12th year. That's, that's the hope.
Well.
We've got to weigh the data, obviously.
I would think, I would think as a goal, I mean, for, for this forecast, I mean, how much would it change your five-year forecast if instead of having the? if instead of having the reduction in enrollment, we kept it steady at, let's say, 2,100 kids?
Well, can you see the graph? Can you see the pink, orange, whatever that line is?
Yeah.
So in order to receive any more funding for this year, we have to add 28 kids. Next year, we have to add 219 kids, then 253, 430, 535. So what that means is...
Yeah.
Is we will not receive another dime this year for 10 more kids, 13 more kids, or 20 more kids, that we have to exceed 23 of the kids before we'll see out of dime from the state. And once we do see out of dime from the state, it's only going to be at $2,495 per student. So my point with this discussion is, is if you go back to the slide that shows how important our revenues are to us, The state is 26% of our total revenues.
Right. But it's an important 26%.
It is. It is. And it's something that's always very, it's very upfront. People look at, people wonder about your state funding.
Could you really say that's 29% Julie?
When you consider 26? Well, 26 plus our restricted aid is, yeah, 3%.
And can you tell them what restricted aid is?
We did an additional amount of money, a very small amount, like $5,000 for career tech, and kind of career tech offerings we would have for students. And then the great majority of restricted is economic disadvantaged funding. So the state is said is more expensive to educate a child that has a poorer background, so they give us a little bit more money for that.
And how do they capture the definition of economic disadvantage? Is that through free and reduced lunch?
Some of it is free and reduced, yes.
Do you know how we've been doing on getting the rest of the kids enrolled with free and reduced, or at least checking those boxes?
That is what we're working on.
Do we know if we're at 70%, 80% complete?
We do not.
Okay, cool. Is there updates on changing the website to make that enrollment requirement actually part of their page? Is that they can't finish enrollment until they fill out that paperwork?
We're working with them one by one.
Okay. I'm saying, have we talked to IT about making that change? So if we do have people coming in, let's say somebody moves into our district, can we make that change with IT so that we don't have to count new folks and then follow up with them also while we're trying to catch up from this year's already enrolled students?
We do do it as part of the enrollment process.
Right, but I'm saying, can we make it required as they're filling out paperwork?
I don't think you can require someone to complete that free and reduced lunch paperwork. I think it is like...
Just check the box. Do I want it? No. Do you want it? Yes.
So it's offered at the time enrollment. At this time, we'd like for you to da-da-da-da. We have the computers for you. We have someone who can help you. So it's...
Okay. I just heard that people were already selecting finished, and then it came up like after that. And if they wanted to, so people would just skip over it. That was the feedback I was made to believe, is that it was there, but it wasn't before the submit portion.
If they did it at home, you mean?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't remember that, really. I remember being part of the...
Okay, they said it wasn't required for them to fill it out before they could hit submit. So then they had to go back and do it later.
All right, you're not required to, but it's within...
I'm just saying, is there a way we can make it required? Do you want this? Yes, no?
Right, is that what you're saying? Like legally, you can't require it?
Just to say yes, no. And if you say no, you don't fill it out. If you say yes, it opens it for you and you can fill it out.
But when we see you go through the lunch line and if you...
I'm not sure about that part.
We work with you that way. It is a being very personal work. It has to be one-to-one. And generally, that's...
I'm just trying to think of the way we can save a set for that enrollment so that it's just done and we don't have to have somebody or pay somebody to do that extra work after the fact.
I wish it were that simple. I really do. This is the time of the year, the first month of school, the certification carries over. So if you were free and reduced last year, your first month of school will be free and reduced also. And then after that falls off, parents have to apply again. So this is the point in time where everybody's working really hard to make sure those fall off have the documentation they needed before. Can we move forward? Well, one of the challenges is just getting folks to enroll. We had a number, I was talking just in the middle of school, and we had, I'd say, more than 20 students that came but never enrolled. So we're working to do that personal work. So property tax allocations are payments from the state of Ohio to reimburse districts for tax revenue that the state discontinued. Like I said before, we used to get tangible personal property tax on inventory, businesses that would have inventory, cars, cars for sale, or any expensive equipment that they needed to do their business. We used to get tax on it. That tax went away years ago. And the state has been giving us some money, all districts in the state of Ohio, some money to make up for that. Now they're phasing that tangible personal property allocation out. So in fiscal year 12, we received $3,388,000 in this category. And fiscal year 23 leaves that $1,390,000. So that's a loss of almost 70% of our funding over 12 years. This graph shows just 10 years, which is 66% of funding loss.
Why is that Julie?
The state... Well, it's hard for me to not just say what I want to say here, but the state felt it best to just give districts money based on student enrollment and get them out of all the other businesses, all the other revenue sources. But those other revenue sources, like tax allocations, each district is very unique. And, you know, we've talked before about how Norwood has a very high concentration of businesses. Well, therefore, we need more money to continue to educate the way we have in the past because we used to have taxes. Well, then they took away the taxes, so then we had tax allocations. Well, now they're taking away the tax allocations, so we're left with $2,495 per student from the state, which is not enough to educate the child.
So a majority of districts are now going into personal income taxes?
Yeah, they're going income taxes, or they're just continuing to go back for additional monies of some kind. And an income tax would be something that would be good for Norwood to do because we have so many people who work in the district, you know, with all these businesses here. So that's something else we'll have to discuss.
Good luck, Sophie.
Yeah, when we get to that. You can make an unincome tax for the people who are retired. They might have to pay it. They're usually good to vote for, seems to be.
Or I know it could be contained.
So there's a lot of options. We have a lot of things to talk about in the next two years. So other revenues, more than 50% of the other revenue column is payment lieu of taxes. This amount was inflated last year, as you can see by that large bar. Inflated last year to a one-time payment of almost $1 million due to a property sale. So that one popped up. I'm sure you remember hearing Ernie talk about that. Going forward, we don't have any large settlements expected in the forecast. However, in the spring of last year, the board agreed to challenge some property values. Once we see how those values change during the board revision process, we may need to restate our other revenue values and estimates, as well as our real estate tax revenues.
Do we have any update on how the process is going?
Overall, it's going pretty well. I just don't have the actual numbers compiled yet from the attorney. But overall, it's going pretty well. So I'm hopeful. So this next graph again compares the forecast from early to the current forecast. This is on the expenditure side. So you'll see all of them very similar. The dark blue is current, the light blue is May's forecast. So you'll see we're seeing some savings in payroll and benefits due to summer hires and attrition. And then other categories are just really very close. Again, I like this. I probably have to tell you how we spend our money. Salary is at 56%, benefits are at 17%. Together, that's 73% for our personnel costs. However, some of our purchase services category at 23% should also be considered personnel. Because we're small, we contract out for many of our services, including high-end special ed services, sub-teacher placement, cleaning services, transportation, staffing, and even repairs. All of those in larger districts would be considered actual personnel costs. Also, remember that school choice is a purchase service, so open enrollment out, community schools, college credit plus, et cetera. All those costs are considered purchase services. And some of the reasons why purchase services seem so high is because of that. Supplies and other expenditures are very small portions of our total costs, our total budget. So this graph shows salaries on a per-pupil basis. And again, this goes back to your talk, Brandon, about either reducing our size, our footprint, or getting the students. So this shows our salaries on a per-pupil basis. And even though I have very conservative raises in the forecast, you'll see that our costs are going up, and that's because we have protected lower student counts going forward.
That's a big increase in five years.
Yeah. It is. And again, it's just driven by that lower divisor of less students. As we move forward, we will consider not our recent staff, as I said before, as they resign or retire, to get to a smaller size, a size more related to our student counts. And when I say I want to get to a smaller size, in no way do I think that's going to balance the budget. I just know going into a levy, if there's any talk of us having small class sizes, we won't get the levy passed.
Right.
So it's a two-edged sword. We have to be fiscally responsible before we ask for one. Same as the prior slide, these expenditures are presented on a per-student basis. These increases are growing more rapidly than the prior slide. However, because I do have estimated increases in health insurance, combine that with the lower student counts going forward, and you'll see those costs are really increasing on a per-student basis. Norwood saw a 10% increase in health insurance premium this year, and I expect 8% for all years future going forward. And I think that probably, hopefully, will not happen. Hopefully, we'll go back to some 0% increases like we had the three years prior to the 10% increase. And do remember that we are saving about $100,000 this year. It's kind of spread out, half this year and half last year because our staff agreed to go to 20% premiums paid by themselves. So that is savings, a lot of money. In this graph, you'll see the actual district costs for our health, dental, and life this year are expected to be $2.2 million. This is purchase services graph. Because purchase services is such a combination of lots of different things, I like to break it out in this line graph so that you can see which categories are well-controlled, which ones do we need to continue to work on, and then there's some that are just stable. So the gray line you'll see is school choice. We saw savings last year, I'm hoping for savings this year. The savings were due to parent disentitlement with ECOG closing. So there was quite a few students that came back to districts, to public schools because of the ECOG scandal, and we hope that continues. So the dark blue line is contracted staff. We saw, this is the second year that I'm estimating savings. We did see savings last year. This is our transportation, cleaning staff, our resource officer, teacher subs, et cetera. Special ed is in the orange line. And despite every effort to control these costs, it's just hard to really control it. All it takes is one or two students to move in, it's a big question. The other category, the light blue category, consists of repairs, PDE, attorney's costs, leases, property insurance, those kind of things, those are well-controlled. The yellow line at the bottom is utilities. And that's well-controlled also. But we do expect a slight increase due to air conditioning.
But with upgrading our electrical grid, will we see some of that level out also?
And that's what they, our architect and the trades have told us, that we selected, the actual HVAC units that we selected are high efficiency. So we'll be paying less for gas and electric, but we still are picking up air conditioning. So we are actually providing another four or five months of conditioning that we'll have to pay for. So in the summer times, you know, it was nothing to turn everything off and it would be 110 degrees in the buildings. Now, you know, we'll keep it regulated to maybe 80 or 90. So this other, this last graph is an actual sniff of the forecast. In the beginning of my presentation, I said that I'm assuming that all other funds besides the general fund will stand on their own or will be forced to stand on their own. And this is why. You'll see that the transfers and advances really can soak up some money. We have three transfers every year that are large ones, and then assorted smaller ones. The three large transfers are $540,000 a year for debt service. We had some very old debt, I guess, that the district had borrowed for cash flow problems years ago that Ernie managed to get refinanced so that we could get it paid off. We've got three more years of payments, including this year, and that will be done. That will save us $540,000 a year, so that will be nice. That is in the forecast, that savings. The next two, $282,000, and then the $141,000 is for instructional mobility. That is our technology costs. And when I talked to Ernie about this transfer, he said... He called it something. I'm trying to think what he called it. The throttle. It's a throttle. We can stop transferring that money from the general fund to the permanent improvement fund. The permanent improvement fund brings in enough money and revenue to support our instructional technology and our capital needs. However, we're trying to build that permanent improvement fund so that when we get to the end of our project, when we get done with elementaries and we get done with the middle school, and we start on that high school, we don't have the funding for that high school. When we first got our estimates together for the construction project, it exceeded, it was right above $40 million. When we sold bonds, we could only sell $30 million of bonds. So there's $10 million shortages that we need to find. I believe, and Ernie believed also, that if we continue to save the $424,000 for technology, transfer that money from the general fund to the permanent improvement fund so that instructional technology is not a drain on a permanent improvement fund, that we can get that fund at the $5, $6 million range. So then, we just need to find funding for $4 million to $5 million in order to complete the high school permanent project. So right now, my point of this whole conversation is to tell you that I have the $424,000 continuing to be transferred from the general fund and permanent improvement fund at any point in time where it gets too bad. But I just don't think we can do it anymore. Bond direction from the Board of Education, I can take that out. And we just have to deal with the consequences that we may not have everything saved that we want for the high school.
Or it may not cost as much as we think it should.
Or we may see...
Or scope may be adjusted.
I don't know how everybody else feels, but I think in light of reviewing this document as of right now, putting a pause on that fund transfer is probably the most prudent direction that we could go as a board until we can have some better direction on what we're going to do with enrollment or district size. And then maybe start that back up, and then you are too.
When do we do that transfer? What time do you...
Because that's not done throughout the year. It's done all at one time.
At the end of the year, that's correct.
At the end of the year. So we've got, we don't have to do it right now, put a pause on it, but we, we do need to be thinking about, you know, what's going to happen at the end of the year? Do we want to at this point? Or are we going to have the answers? We need to make the decisions we need to make. So that's something we need to keep on, huh?
Yes. And, um, we need to keep in mind also that $424,000 is a small portion of what will be short next year. And the $424,000 really only needs to be done for two more years. So we could easily take it out of the three last years of the forecast and try to keep it for this year and next year. And then by that time, we should be talking about what are we going to do to the high school? So that we're starting to develop scope for the high school and then we would have some idea of how much money we can dedicate to it.
We got to make a decision on that as soon as we close the calendar year.
So I guess I will make a note to, um, talk to you all about the lock for the forecast.
Yeah, sure.
That was all of my presentation.
Did you see the forecast for October forecast?
Yes. The, you know, I'm, you're right, May forecast, yes.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions, Rob? Anything we want to discuss? Yes. Um, I am out of the office at our next meeting for mandatory training. Um, so we discussed the forecast today, so next week I need to just pass it as it is. Um, so that I can remain compliant.
I don't like this enrollment.
I know. I don't either. I would love to increase. I did an enrollment study, uh, just today, and I should have brought it, and I didn't. But, um, I think it was 10 years ago. No, it was, it was 15 years ago. And there was almost 3,000 students in that.
Do we have an update on Allison?
We do. Um, Jordy asked us some information. We met. To everyone. Kathy and I met with, um, our two realtors and really put the heat on them to start seeing a marketing plan besides just putting it out there on websites. So we mentioned then that we wanted to see, uh, if we qualified to be included in Ohio Business Gateway, which a lot of businesses review for land purchase or businesses to, to move into. And, uh, we just heard four or five days ago that we do qualify to be part of Ohio Business Gateway and that we can advertise Allison's sale on there. So we could be attracting some people who want to put an office building there or to convert it into residences. And, um, with that information, they said that Hamilton County, Hamilton County Development Team, or I can't remember the exact name, but that Hamilton County is going to sponsor us so that we can be on Ohio Business Gateway for advertising. And, um, it's my understanding that that, that is a global network that people look at. So I thought that was really exciting.
So, um, have they had any lookers?
They have somebody that is interested right now and I can't...
Different than the guy?
Yes. It is.
I saw a different price. I saw a different price listed on there too.
It is. It is a different, uh, that's the next thing I want to talk to you about. So don't let me forget that. I want to, um, mention to you that the term is up with our realtor. I was just going to see if I can read my email real fast to tell you who it was that said that they were interested in it.
We want to, probably.
Probably not. Okay. Yeah. Yeah, that's a good idea. So yes, they do have somebody that's just trying to get in to look at the building and they're just at the beginning stages of it. So, um, and then our, our realtor contract is up. Um, and I told you at the beginning of the meeting that there are two documents that I gave you that are just single marketing packets that they're going to be using. And then before the next meeting, I will have on the board docs document the renewal, the renewal, um, agreement that you have to approve.
Pause everybody on renewal.
When do we go live on Gateway?
We already are.
It already is?
And they just, they did put up, it was probably two or three weeks ago, a sign for passersby. Just like this. One of the community understand that it is still for sale. I think they're waiting on Ohio Business Gateway to actually be live. They have everything ready, but they're waiting for the, of course, the signed agreement case that gets sent right away. They don't look to be without a realtor representation.
So it seems to me that they've been somewhat passive with this problem.
I think they, um, thought that person that was interested before. And remember, there was a, there was a, a serious looker as a head investor. And I think the price kind of, the price that they had placed on the property kind of really bogged things down and, um, they just didn't follow through. And, you know, they were very happy to change marketing once we talked to them. So I, I think it's going to be positive as of the forward.
Right. But if we renew another contract, I mean, either, either we stick with these guys for one more round or we start one over again.
Now that we're on this Gateway, I think we should give that an opportunity to fly first before we make a decision to keep changing things up.
Well, I mean, but, you know, we're, we're at the renewal stage.
Right.
Yeah. How long is it a little for?
Six more, six more months. So...
But this is the beginning of a brand-new avenue for us. And I think it's kind of like scientific experiment. If you want to find out which one is going to work, you don't change everything every time. You keep something consistent and you change a thing. The last time, we changed the realtor. Now we're changing that it's on Gateway. If in six months Gateway has made no impact on whether or not we get a bite, we switch rates and keep Gateway. And that way we have a constant, uh, at, at, at some way for us to gauge whether or not something is successful.
But is that worth six months? Well, why six months? Can we do three?
Well, I think we were suggesting two things, perhaps an adjustment in that number, which would, which would capture a different audience.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can certainly talk about three months instead.
Kind of, we could always go back with them after three months. If the three months, it gives us the opportunity to, to hold their feet to the fire a little bit. They'll sit for five months and do nothing again.
Yeah.
Tell them they got three months to show us some love or a little walk. Don't just go to the market for any more.
Okay with that.
Show me some love.
I'm okay with your...
Show me some love. Show me anything so far, still there. Or at the end of three months, for instance, that helps.
So then the, the documents that I gave you showed price, the sales price. Um, so just look through that. I will also send you the Gateway links because they were really, they were pretty, pretty nice, I thought.
Now, one question I would have for you. I know we're giving them a three-month window, but let's look at November to January as that three-month window. Should we take into consideration that a majority of that is non-viable sales time? You don't have a lot of folks looking at property between Thanksgiving and Christmas.
Oh, for commercial properties.
For commercial properties.
Commercial properties, different.
It, it can be, but...
So where's the price on this again?
I'm just wondering if we should take four months.
On this one, it's, it's right here. On, exactly.
So, so we think about that first. And then also the, from what I understand, it's on terms first, so quarter of that three months is...
So, so one has... So one document has one price and another one...
That's what I was asking. Did that original presentation to us, I think?
Ah, okay.
With that one, is what they were telling us they valued it at?
And, and the price is four times there.
Oh, yeah. And that's what it is. One was original.
I think it was five.
Yeah.
The original? I think it was... They valued it, it's that one, but I don't think we went that high.
Yeah.
We got to get, we got to do my, my stuff. Now I have to go to the... Buyers had to use the space. And we quickly said, no, they come up with, which is three, that's one. So that's why if you drop by, you see this line says land.
We have finance committee still. We have finance committee still. I just did the forecast. Do you want me to do that?
If you would.
Yes. So financial reports, just our typical financial reports. Uh, forecast was the financial report. Then we had the fine sum, the check reg, the check pay, and the bank reconciliation. We have the minutes certificate, which is just an updated, um, revenue estimate. Appropriation resolution and 412 agreement is our updated budget estimates. Then in our purchase orders, just purchase orders that need board approval for various reasons. Transfers and advances from the general fund, $22,342 to the flood insurance fund. That's a transfer and then we will close that fund. Same with the district agency health insurance. And then food service fund, transfer, an advance of $108,000 to make it a zero balance for the month. And then finally, my forecast and assumptions are on there for your approval next week. And then the last thing is a modification of the architect's contract to include the remodeling design of the east wing. And that attachment was on there for you.
Everybody have anything else?
Thank you.